City of Crescent City, City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Murray?
Here.
Councilmember Slert?
Here.
And Mayor Shalom.
Here, thank you. Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Fresh in from Scotland, on your... Oh, you're not going to use him?
No.
Okay, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I'd be glad to please rise. Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
He has crutches underneath the dais.
I'm good from here up though.
We want to welcome you back, you were missed.
Good to be back.
Okay, we just adjourned from closed session and if Mr. Black would please report out of any actions taken?
Yes ma'am, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to, before we move on to our consent calendar and normal business, I'm going to welcome a really wonderful group of young people and their supervisors. Officer Gill and Officer Wiley, our Crescent City Explorers, who have worked more hours than most volunteers in a given year in the city of Crescent City. Their work is very much appreciated by our community and by this council and especially our city employees. And they worked very hard. Hey Ms. Charlie. They'd like a viewing room put into the budget for next year so the kids can come. Anyway, they worked really hard last year to raise enough money to go to the Explorers Academy in Georgia. And they were very successful and so, and thankful to the community, so they wanted to give us a presentation this evening on their trip, so I'm going to introduce Officer Gill.
All right, good evening council, thank you for letting us come today and share our experience about the National Explorer Conference. Like you said, I'm Officer Gill and I've recently taken over the advisor of the Crescent City Police Explorer post. I would like to invite my assistant Officer Wiley and the Explorers to come forward with me. As you'd mentioned, the National Law Enforcement Explorer Conference has been a goal and dream of our Explorer posts for several years. And it's always kind of been one of those things in the distant future that you really haven't been able to grasp. And not only is it an awarding thing for our kids, but also it's an awesome learning experience for them. So, like I said, it was in Atlanta, Georgia this year, July 17th through the 24th. We drove down to San Francisco, flew out of San Francisco, and went straight to hot and humid Atlanta, Georgia. This trip in general was a first time experience of so many. First of being, for some of the kids, the first time out of Delano County, some of the kids' first flight, some of the kids' first time crossing the Golden Gate Bridge, to all of our first time in Atlanta, Georgia. Even first time to water park, first time to IHOP. It was, it was just neat to hear from the kids, I've never done this before. And for the community to support them in this outing has just been an awesome adventure. So, we've put together a quick little video slideshow of some of the pictures and I'll go ahead and talk through it as, as we go.
Sorry, before you proceed, can the people standing, sitting behind the Explorers see the screen? Okay, great, thanks.
All right, like I said, the Explorer Conference is held every two years and it's thousands of Explorers from all over the US join in. So, we flew out of San Francisco, like I said, first time experience for a lot of the kids to fly, first time to San Francisco. Anyways, it was, it was generally just a fun trip. So, we got there in the morning, we flew on a red eye flight, got some breakfast, IHOP, and then headed to a water park because the kids were not used to 100 degree weather or that much humidity. So, the first day when we got there on Sunday was kind of a fun day. The conference was held at Georgia Tech University, which is a very large campus, so the kids got a lot of walking in, in the, in the warm weather. The kids were divided into two, two teams when they got there. There were team events, individual events, as well as seminars. Kids participated in team events consisting of burglary in progress, search and arrest and search, crime scene search, and hostage negotiation. The team competitions are interesting because us advisors were not allowed in the building while they're competing. So, the sitting outside of the building with all these other advisors and your teams in there competing is such a nerve wracking thing, and then we only get to go inside when they debrief. And all the debriefs we got were very encouraging and the kids did great in their competitions. Individual competitions consisted of the bicycle course, the driving course, police written exam, physical agility test, as well as shooting. Each of the days we were there was, the days were jam packed of either competitions, seminars, or individual events. Some of the seminars the kids went to were bomb investigation, gangs, drugs and influence, as well as defensive tactics. It was interesting to see, I probably bet that we were probably the smallest post there from the smallest town. Other cities from California were, Chico was there, Hemet, California was there, Bakersfield was there, Anaheim was there, and Eldorado County. You'll see in the end a picture of our kids with the Eldorado County Sheriff Explorers. These are the group of kids that come up to our Redwood Coast Leadership Academy, so we got to meet up with them at the conference and go to the competitions and seminars together, which was a really neat experience. So, so this is the driving course, kids had a lot of fun with that. I'd like to point out George, who is not here tonight, we competed on the, on the fourth day of driving competition and he was number one. However, he was beat out on the fifth day, so we didn't get a trophy in that one. Thankfully, Teal didn't cause any damage to vehicles. They also got to experience a concert for the first time. Need Fire is a Celtic rock band. And then this day up here is the rally day where they got to see demonstrations by the US Marshal Service, US Air Marshals, different K-9 SWAT teams, stuff like that. Also with the conference, which was a great thing for the Explorers to experience, they had a career fair set up all the day, so the kids could go and talk to so many different federal agencies, as well as local and state agencies there, showing kids that there's more to law enforcement than, than just patrol. This is the field day where we had, we were bussed out to a rally where they did a bunch of demonstrations, as well as a SWAT demonstration and a bomb demonstration. Like I said, this conference had been a long goal for the kids for a long time and it cost about $1,000 per kid to go. And we sent about seven kids. In a community of our size, in the times that we have, you would think that that's pretty much impossible, you know, for, for this group of kids to, to come up with that money in this community, but the community outpouring in support, I mean, I can't say enough. It's been super encouraging and I can't wait for two more years to grow the post even more, serve our community more, and hopefully send all of our kids to Colorado in 2012, which will be a lot cooler, for sure.
Any live fire?
No. Oh, that was another individual competition, was airsoft competition, which DJ did very well in. World's largest aquarium, Georgia, in Atlanta, Georgia, kids got to go through that too. We're going to go to the Coca-Cola factory, it was closed by the time, by the time we walked there. There's us in Eldorado County, and just ton, I mean, thousands and thousands of Explorers. I mean, you had just a huge number of kids from like New York and Dallas, Texas, just huge agencies, so we held our own very well and looked sharp and the kids did well. And of course, we went to the doughnut factory.
Starting doughnuts at such a young age.
Got to teach them right.
Some habits never are broken, are they?
You're not seeing a picture of me eating a doughnut. Anyways, so, we're also going to be showing this video to the public, we're going to have an award ceremony for our kids, as well as a appreciation ceremony for different, everybody that's helped us get to this point in the near future. We don't have a date set for that, so be looking forward to that as well. So, thank you guys for your support in this, as well as the community. So, DJ is going to come up and share a couple words on his experience, then we'll open it up if you guys have any questions from us.
Great, thank you.
You know, there's not much that I can not say about this conference. It was once in a lifetime. I've been in this post for almost, almost five years, this will be five years. And you know, since I started, this conference has always been in the back of my mind, but it's, you know, to actually be able to go from this small town all the way across the country and go to this, a beautiful campus and spend a week there, and literally to have them shut it down just for us to be there, you know, it means a lot. And, you know, it's a, there's no other experience like it, the scenarios that we did. It was not only fun, but I mean, it was, I don't know, I guess we see it as fun, but I mean, what other people see as stressful situations, I loved it. I know the people that I competed with, they loved it too. I wish I could do it again, you know, and I would in a heartbeat. But, you know, it's, there's no other experience like it, and for us to be able to go do that, it is literally a, there's no other, you could give us all the training in the world, but if you put us up, you know, with FBI, federal agencies and, you know, have them grading us, you know, and see what it's like, you know, because in the small town, you, you kind of get a, a small portion of what everything has to offer, but to go over there, you get a bigger picture. Like Justin said, you, you know, we got a chance to work with, or see things from the, you know, federal level, state level, all the way down to, you know, different agencies. We got to speak with other Explorers from smaller towns, bigger towns. And I mean, just the knowledge that we were able to get ahold of is like no other, you know. And I mean, we could have talked to several other agencies just locally and we couldn't have been able to do it. But it's, it's an experience worthwhile. And I'm glad to see that we were able to do it while I was still in the post. And, you know, I know some of us won't be able to go back next year simply because we're going to do different things, but I know the people that if we do send them again, will do a very good job and make us proud.
Thank you, DJ.
Can I ask you a question, DJ? How old are you?
I'm 17.
And when did you start in the Explorers?
I started, I started attending meetings when I was 13 and a half, couldn't enroll until I was 14. But I started there and even just at the meetings, it was just something that I got ahold of and, you know, it was, I don't know, just being a part of this group that's, you know, it's about being a leader. And something about that I just hooked on to and I loved it. And I knew it was for me and I stuck with it.
And do you fire a gun? Are you familiar, do these kids know how to fire guns?
During the, during our local academy, we do safety classes and we use airsoft guns that simulate, you know, how to operate an actual firearm and go through the safety steps. They haven't done any live fire through the post, but we do simulations through airsoft.
So, if somebody like me who's never handled a gun wants to know how to handle a gun properly, what would I do? Where would I go?
Come to one of our meetings, we'll show you.
Okay.
Or Redwood Coast Leadership Academy that we hold every year.
Well, you can always go off to college, become, go to postgraduate school and come back and, and serve your community as a, as a Crescent City Police Officer.
I'm a, you know, my goals are set high, right now I'm...
Going all the way to the FBI?
No. We, me and Captain Mitchell, both, all he, both of us are enlistment in the US Marine Corps, and that's where we're going.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Wow, great. Does anyone else want to say anything? Welcome to... Ms. Teal?
Do you want to hear that?
They pretty much said it all.
Maya, do you have anything to add?
I just wanted to tell you all how proud I was of, of the group and how well they showed for us and as a representative of the Crescent City Police Department. I have extremely high standards and we didn't have problem one, taking this group that was relatively new travelers and some of them are even new Explorers. So, when I came back, it was hard for me not to, to tell of my experience and the enjoyment that I got of watching them compete without bringing a tear to my eye, I was that proud of them. So, I know that you all would have been too, and they represented us extremely well, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, we just had Mr. Apperson join us, and I would be remiss without saying thank you to him because with his leadership, this post has gotten to where it is today. And we're extremely proud of what you've done for the department and the Explorers. And we know you have big shoes to fill, Mr. Gill, but we know you're going to do just as good of a job and take it to a new level, so thank you to everybody. Thanks very much, kids. Good luck.
Very proud of you.
Eric, did you want to add anything before we continue?
This is the first part of it, but I think the big thing to see here is, is on the rest of the, you know, just having hours, so we want to continue to make this happen before we have to do the games. I'm sure it's the first part.
Before you leave, I know I, I've worked with some of the Explorers before and I know what schools they go to and, and they've, I've seen them at 4th of July and I've seen them helping the community with community events. And they've helped me load bicycles and my truck and trailer to get to a school project. And I just appreciate all they do because it's amazing how many person hours that they contribute to the safety of our city.
I believe it was actually over 4,400 hours this last year.
And that's a great commitment. And even if you never get into law enforcement, the things you're learning now will serve you no matter what you do, whether it's going to the military, the Marines, or law enforcement, or, or business, or whatever, you'll never not use what you're learning now. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you. Okay, we are going to go back to our consent calendar. We have approval of our regular meeting minutes of August 2nd, warrant claims of August 3rd through the 16th, payroll ending July 31st, paid August 6th, and the resolution of the City of Crescent City authorizing this submitted of an application to the California State Department of Housing and Community Development for funding under the Home Investment Partnership. Just to provide a brief explanation, this is the resolution that we passed at our last council meeting, but we are amending it and updating it and you can actually see the, the resolution in the back. So, if I could get a motion?
Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar, items number two through five as submitted.
I'll second that. Thank you.
I have some corrections.
Okay.
On page two, second paragraph...
Of minutes?
The minutes. Bottom of the second paragraph, first to me stating that she was voted in to represent the underrepresented people of our community and feels that the initiative is not a nuisance, but the people speaking out, it should also include and exercising our constitutional rights. I think you'll hear that in the, the recording. And then, there's another correction. I think I've made my position clear to you all that I'm against raising salaries, giving cost of living increases and benefits during these hard economic times, and I was...
Where, is this a correction to the minutes?
Actually, I'm not quite sure how to handle this, probably a question for Bob Black.
Well, first let's address any changes to the minutes.
Okay.
Did you have any more?
No.
Okay, anything else that you need to address in relationship to the consent calendar?
I'm just wondering how to address this one issue.
I don't know what you're...
We have a motion on the table right now.
Yeah, it's the problem of lumping the minutes, the warrant claims, biweekly payroll reports, and then last time we lumped in the memorandum of understanding. And what I want to change from now on is to have that separate, because it caught me unaware, so I wound up voting for it when I didn't intend to vote for it, so I don't know how to handle that, Bob.
Well, I would, I'm gonna, yeah, thanks. I would say that if you thoroughly read your agenda and understand that it's part of the consent calendar, if you have a problem with that, you could speak to Rod about that prior to the meeting. But otherwise, the consent calendar is basically to authorize agenda items that either are just normal business, that we take care of every council meeting, and/or small items that don't need a public hearing or don't need to be addressed publicly in depth.
Yeah, I see, one of those where times where I was caught unaware, so otherwise I would have notified Rod.
I think, I'm not sure notifying Rod is even the, I think every council member has a privilege to remove an item from consent.
Or request.
Right.
Yeah, and so, if your, if consent has four things and you want to support three and vote against one, and you request the one be removed, go ahead, you vote on consent on the three.
Right, and I've done that for her many times.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as she understands that.
Yeah. I understand that.
So, did you need to remove anything from the consent calendar?
Not today.
Okay. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalom.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn to the City Housing Authority. Please note that all five directors are present, and is there any public comment for housing issues? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to the consent calendar, the regular meeting minutes of July 19th and warrant claims, July 20th through August 16th.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, Megan, do we have a, a report this evening?
Nope.
Nope?
Sorry.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have no new business tonight, so we'll adjourn to our next Housing Authority meeting of September 20th. How are things going, your first couple months?
I'm hanging in there.
Yeah?
Yeah, I've kind of got a lot going on.
I see that.
And it's a good job, so...
I didn't even know, but now I do. Congratulations. So, when are you due?
September 24th.
Oh, just around the corner.
We've got another month to go, yeah, five weeks.
Wow. And how are we addressing, are you going to take some time off?
I am.
Okay.
Sophie's actually going to come back and cover for me.
Oh, okay, great, perfect.
Think she knows what she's doing if she comes back and covers for you?
Let's hope so, I owe her one, that's for sure.
All right, well go enjoy your evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we're going to adjourn and, to the Crescent City RDA. And please note, all five directors are present, and is there any public comment on redevelopment agency issues? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move to the consent calendar of the regular meeting minutes of July 19th, and we have no warrants this evening.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Burns, Slert and Burns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. We have new, new business items. Are there any reports or questions from the directors? Okay, all right, we will adjourn and reconvene as a city council and move on to reports, or excuse me, to public hearings. We have a public hearing this evening for the grantee performance report for our Community Development Block Grant Program of 2009 Economic Development Grant, and we have Charlene Maisy here this evening to give us a little executive summary before I open the public hearing.
Good evening. Basically what this is, is the annual report that's required. Anytime we have open grant activities going on, the state requires us to do an annual report on its...
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalone.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we're going to adjourn to the City Housing Authority. Please note that all five directors are present, and is there any public comment for housing issues? Okay, seeing none, I'll move to the consent calendar. The regular meeting minutes of July 19th and warrant claims of July 20th through August 16th.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, Megan, do we have a report this evening?
Nope.
Nope?
Sorry.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We have no new business tonight, so we'll adjourn to our next Housing Authority meeting of September 20th. How are things going, your first couple months?
I'm hanging in there.
Yeah?
Yeah, I've kinda got a lot going on.
I see that.
And a good job, so...
I didn't even know. But now I do. Congratulations. So when are you due?
September 24th.
Oh, just around the corner.
We've got another month to go. Yeah, five weeks.
Wow. And how are we addressing, are you gonna take some time off?
I am.
Okay.
Sophie's actually gonna come back and cover for me.
Oh, okay. Great.
Think she knows what she's doing if she comes back and covers for you?
Let's hope so. I owe her one, that's for sure.
Alright, well go enjoy your evening.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, we're going to adjourn and to the Crescent City RDA. And please note, all five directors are present, and is there any public comment on redevelopment agency issues? Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment and move to the consent calendar of the regular meeting minutes of July 19th, and we have no warrants this evening.
Move to approve as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. Burns, Slert and Burns. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. We have new, new business items. Are there any reports or questions from the directors? Okay, alright, we will adjourn and reconvene as a city council and move on to reports, or excuse me, to public hearings. We have a public hearing this evening for the grantee performance report for our community development block grant program of 2009 Economic Development Grant, and we have Charlene Maisy here this evening to give us a little executive summary before I open the public hearing.
Good evening. Basically, what this is, is the annual report that's required. Anytime we have open grant activities going on, the state requires us to do an annual report on, it's usually just the number of folks that get served over the course of the past fiscal year. We're required to have a public hearing to give the public an opportunity to comment on the programs, and then we submit the report to the state. This time, we only have one open grant, and that is the Micro Enterprise Assistance Program that's run by North Coast Small Business Development Center, and I believe that Barbara Burke is here to talk a little bit about what they're doing with that.
Great.
So let her do that.
Thank you. Barbara, welcome.
All of you who know me know I love my job, love my clients, love the city. So I'm gonna give you some numbers, and then I'm gonna say a few words. Milestones are jobs, businesses, sales, and so on. So I'm sorry I'm giving you a lot of numbers without the paperwork, but that's how it is today. There, and this is 2009.
2009, I want to report that, right?
Mm-hmm. I had some numbers for 2010, but let's focus on 2009. One business was purchased for $30,000, change in sales of $2,372, in other words, three and a third million dollars increase in sales. Seventy-nine jobs created, 278 jobs retained.
I'm already lost here.
Oh.
You had one business purchased for $30,000?
Mm-hmm.
And that equaled $3 million and...
No, no. This is all the milestones information from 2009.
Okay, it's not one, okay.
Oh, no. Wouldn't that be wonderful?
Do you have that report for us?
Written? I don't have it written.
Okay.
I can prepare a written report if you like. So change in sales means the change in sales over the previous years, and so the sales increased two and, a little more than two and a third million dollars. Remember, 2009 also includes the work we did with the Harbor Commission, understanding the data around guaranteeing the jobs. Let's see, jobs created 79, 278 jobs retained, sales retained $23 million. It's amazing how much money is in play in our community. I'm gonna speak just a smidgen about investments, and that is owner, bank, microloans, private family member investors. In other words, all loans and all equity that business folks put into their business are borrowed, or family members and so on, money that's put into play for supporting businesses, and that's three and a third million as well. New clients in the DelNort office in January through December 2009, 128 new clients. Total clients for the DelNort office in 2009, 203, or 18 hours, 1,818 counseling hours. CDBG clients, which are the clients specifically in our contract we serve for your CDBG funding, 43 clients, 709 hours. With the assistance of additional funds like CDBG funds, North Coast Small Business Development Center is able to match SBA dollars two to one to provide technical assistance to its clients. Total program cost per hour of service in 2009 was $136 per hour of service, one of the most efficient SBDC centers in the nation. We continue to leverage our funding with the new CDBG flight model. This is our new short form, this is the new modality, which is industry-specific. We are in the final portion of our arts flight, which we call the Arts Salon I. This is extremely successful. Ten CDBG artists meet monthly for workshops with experts in the fields of, for example, art law. We had the California Lawyers for the Arts Lead Attorney. We had accounting, record-keeping, booking, bookkeeping with a CPA arts-specific consultant, a nationally-recognized fair markets and trade shows national expert, and so on. We're going to have a childcare flight this fall, and another kind of a flight that talks about small business investing in their own businesses. We continue counseling clients in their seeking funds from DelNort Economic Development Corporation, credit unions, banks, financial entities in our region. Our five business basics workshops continue to be well-attended and successful. We continue to partner successfully with Rural Human Services and Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority, Bill Renfro, and we certainly enjoy the small business loans, the 1% $25,000 five-year loans, and we will have in a few weeks loans, seven of those We've also worked with Dinaca, Holly Austin, who's worked beautifully with us in the Arts Salon I. The salon artists will hold their art show and graduation ceremony Friday, September 24th, and we hope you come. It'll be at the Courthouse Art Gallery, 5:00 to 7:30 p.m., and you're all invited to share in the celebration. And this year is SBDC's 25th anniversary. Many of you may not know that the SBDC, or the North SBDC began, you know, we are part of the Eureka's and Humboldt's organization, was started here in DelNort County with Fran Clark and others. So we're gonna celebrate our 25th year with a big party, so watch for your invitations. We expect to see you there. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
But I don't know if this is just a Barbara Burke question, or a Barbara and Bill Renfro question, because I've been communicating with Bill Renfro and people from the ministerial association and the churches in the community about setting up a temporary homeless shelter program. And I was just wondering if in our conversations, we were talking about having one or two people employed, having a trailer, having a portable shower. Would any of this come under the SBC, the Small Business Loans?
SBDC.
Or any of the...
The Tri-Agency $25,000 money, if I'm correct, is for non, is not for nonprofit corporations.
It is, this would not, it is not for nonprofit, okay? We're not talking about being a nonprofit, okay? Even though they may coordinate with churches as a place to temporarily house the homeless, the people that would be employed and be checking people in, setting things up, cleaning it up in the morning, would not be a nonprofit.
It would be a for-profit?
Send them over to...
I don't see how, but...
Send them over to see me.
Send...
Send them to see me, and we'll, we'll start working on it, see if it works as, as part of our SBDC program.
Okay, okay.
And then they can work with Bill to see if it's part of what he does.
Yeah, and that brings up another question. Is this something that we should be discussing as a council agenda item, or is it just something that we should...
Well, I'm not sure of the details of your project, and so tonight, we're just approving our CDBG report for 2009 and closing it out, so that would be something you may want to talk with Mr. Butler about.
Okay.
I have a question for Barbara. You're talking about two and a third million dollars change in sales. Now, how do you get that figure? Because that's an interesting figure.
At the end of the year, we poll all the clients we've seen that year and ask them have they had an increase or decrease in their sales, and if they have, what is the amount? This is if they're willing to tell us, and mostly they do tell us. All our client information is confidential. We, of course, share the data, but we don't share the names of the businesses.
So that's an increase?
Yes.
Okay. But that's their report, it's not from like the State Board of Equalization?
No, and we have no way to access...
Verify.
Choose not to, yeah.
Okay.
And pretty much amazingly, most of our clients are very honest, you know, because we get to know them by helping them with their business plans and their finances and...
So that's pretty impressive, I'd say.
It's very impressive.
Yeah, that's... And then the 278 jobs retained, is that from, what, is it from businesses in, throughout the county, or is it, where's that figure?
Any client we've seen in 2009 who's, who's kept a business could be the owner, could be the employees they retained from the previous year.
Okay.
And you're attributing the retention to your, the services you provide to them?
And their, and their expertise and their good businesses. You know, we really support and counsel, we can't make them do anything, and they come seeking information and expertise. Hopefully, they come with a good idea and a good, sound business plan, and often, being able to retain employees includes getting financing to continue to expand and grow their business.
Sure.
Sometimes they're able to get a loan for their payroll needs.
Barbara, is there anybody in the city that's keeping track of the businesses that are closing and why?
Not that I know of. We try to catch up with people if we, that's not really what we're about, but just as people in the world, we do try to support people. And we've, I've been here now five years, and as you know, we've been in business 25 years, and still people are hearing about us, so hopefully, we won't have many businesses closing.
Lastly, I wanted to compliment you on a job well done, and also your art gallery, it's beautiful.
Oh, thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. This is our third year of being, if I can say, Humboldt County, and we are still the best in the state. Thanks to you all.
Congratulations.
For funding us and supporting us.
Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Is there any public comment on the grant performance report for our CPG 2009 Economic Development Grant? Okay, seeing none, we will, do we need to take action? Just the hearing tonight? Okay, great, thanks. Alright, we're gonna move on to regular public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address our council on any matter within our jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. However, the council's not able to undertake extended discussion. And before you go, thank you, Charlene. I enjoyed meeting your new little guy, he's adorable. I got to see him, he's absolutely perfect.
I know. That's where I saw you.
Yeah.
Aw.
Thanks for working on this and taking care of your family, too. Okay, sorry about that. Moving on, such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action or placement on a future agenda. And after receiving recognition from myself, please state your name, whether you live in the city or the county for the record, and limit your time to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Sir?
My name's Timothy Abbey.
If you could pull this up, and then, there you go. Thanks.
Timothy Abbey, I live here in Crescent City. I just have a comment about the video. It's rather concerning, in my opinion, about the federalization and militarization of the police force, the breakdown of Posse Comitatus.
The what? I'm sorry.
The breakdown of Posse Comitatus from the federalization of the police force. I mean, from the video, I saw just pretty much militarization of police, I just find it concerning. I'm probably the only one to say that, but...
Okay. Anything else?
That's pretty much it.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Hi, Jesse.
I had a wonder about the guys in the ghillie suits out there sniping. Looked like they had a lot of fun, though. I'm back to address something that brought to the attention of the board before, and it's the payroll. I had a problem with the swimming pool, or any of these, any of these little agencies here with the number of employees in part-time. I thought we were gonna break this down so we knew exactly what part-time meant, because if you look at this, you see that the swimming pool has two people plus part-time, which is very vague, and they have $8,890 in regular pay, as opposed to, say, the Housing Authority, who gets paid less than $2,500 less, and they have four people plus part-time. I mean, how does that break down? We were supposed to have them state what they meant by part-time.
Well, during public comment, I can't answer your questions, because I don't have the piece of paper in front of me, nor the detailed payroll information.
Okay, well, this has been a topic for you before.
But, okay, so, but Jesse?
Yes.
As you're aware, if you go down to City Hall, they could actually show you the breakdown.
Actually, I go down to City Hall, and really nothing happened down there.
Okay, when did you go?
I feel that I have to go before...
No, that's okay. When did you go, so I can, so we can address that.
Well, I've been lots of times.
And, and did you ask for a breakdown of that?
I've brought lots of things before, before the city council. I've been down there with Freedom of Information Act statements, and nothing happens, although I come here and get a little attitude about it, like I've done it more than three times in the whole 12 years that I've been coming here.
I'm not trying to give you attitude, just trying to understand the facts so I can help you...
I know.
...address your problem, so...
I would like to ask...
Rod, are you available tomorrow morning?
What do you want, Jesse? The number of bodies, part-time bodies?
Well, we've already discussed this. I mean, we were supposed, the city council told staff to do something about putting, putting the, so that we know how many people are actually working, and what part-time means. I mean, it's so, it's so vague, it doesn't mean anything. I mean, to the point where you have, you have the Housing Authority with four, with the Housing Authority with twice as many employees making 75% of the money that the pool does.
Yeah.
So exactly, how many, how many part-time people do we have at the pool? And when I look at your new breakdown, every time that you need somebody over at the pool as part-time, they're paid. So I mean, what is this, where's all this money going?
Well, the part-time people at the pool are mostly are young lifeguards that work. I usually sign probably anywhere from eight to 12 paychecks for part-time workers at the pool for the kids that are lifeguarding during the summer, and they'll each get, you know, like a couple hundred bucks for working part-time on their paycheck.
Well, the Fred Endert Municipal Pool, the new scheduling you got, I mean, every time you have anybody over there, I mean, $75 an hour, I mean, somebody's getting paid by these people that are paying into the pool fund.
The $75 an hour is if you actually rent the pool for a party.
Well, there's a whole, there's a whole rundown of, you know, if you use the pool, if you have the, if you have the slide, you have another person, and you pay another fee.
Right. So I was just gonna say, are you available tomorrow morning?
I'm not, so what we can do...
Ken, available?
I don't understand the problem with just putting, like we've already discussed, putting what part-time means. I mean, how many people are part-time? You got 10 part-time people?
So you just wanna know how many?
How many hours do we have?
You just wanna know how many part-time people work in each department?
Well, I mean, so when we go, when we go on the internet to try to become, become informed, we don't have this, this very vague...
Okay. Ken, could you please...
We've already been through this, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please take that and update how many full-time and how many part-timer in each?
Let me try and simplify this for you. What, like in the first one that he was referring to in today's agenda, it says Police Department 14 plus part-time, there's one part-time employee. The definition of a part-time employee means they work less than 20 hours in a week, so they work less than 1,000 hours in a year. The Housing Authority has one part-time person that works on average less than 20 hours a week. The pool has about 20 lifeguards that we have that are all part-time, and they all work less than that amount, but like you say, one time you might have eight people in the pay period, the next time you may have 15. It just depends on how he schedules and who works during that time. It becomes extremely labor-intensive just to put down how many lifeguards are on that pay period.
But it doesn't even state how many hours are part-time.
Don't, please, you can't yell out from the crowd, Jess.
The public works, we have two part-time, that's the seasonal part-time positions that we've hired. So other than that, all these are right on, except the pool. And it's because it's been this way for a long time, we have a lot of part-time pool employees. In the budget, it'll say the number of positions authorized, and it's usually .2 per person. In the budget, it'll say the number of positions authorized and it's usually .2 per person. So five part-time people makes one full-time equivalent employee. And other than that, it's something that we'd have to manually do to calculate. I, I don't see any value or benefit in that because you're not going to be able to have that exact information and be able to extrapolate any, anything else from that.
Right. And I, I think perhaps maybe Mr. Salisbury was looking at another item on our agenda which we're citing, fee usage.
Yeah, fee usage and revenue charged, we use the cost information to calculate that revenue side, but the, the two are not correlated.
Yeah, they're not the same.
So hopefully, that addresses anything. If he needs additional information, you'll be more than happy to help him. I'm not sure what we're trying to get to.
And we have all of our salaries online.
And it's also seasonal because of, in the summer, there are a lot more swimming lessons than during the, when the school's in session, so.
Yeah, if you go online under the Finance RDA section on our webpage, on the right-hand side, it'll say Adopt a Budget. I just had a new one posted up today because I had shading on the original one and I looked at it over the weekend and I realized you can't read it. So I took off the shading and had Fritz post a new one today. On the very last pages of those, those budgets, we'll have what's called a Position Control. And that's how many positions were authorized to fill, whether part-time, full-time, and it gives all those numbers in there. With the pool, it's very hard. Extremely high turnover, like you said, it's mostly young lifeguards. There's a couple of teaching people that have been here for years, but they're still part-time also. So if he does need any additional help, just contact me. I mean, I'm just as busy as Rod, but it's not like it's going to be recreating, you know, rocket science, so it shouldn't be that hard to get that information.
Great.
If it's an easy process to put down the number of lifeguards in, in something and that's what the council wants, you know, I can probably arrange to have that done. I wanted to make sure that if, like with public works, we had two part-time. That was indicative.
Just have him call Ken and he'll answer any question that you have.
This will be a job I'm going to do.
And all you have to do is call Mr. McDonald, set up an appointment, and he will answer all of your questions. Simple as that.
Can I say something real quickly about the salaries being online? A resident came to my house over the weekend and we had difficulty finding it, so could you tell me where exactly to find that?
Last pages of the budget, the Position Control gives the beginning and ending numbers ever asked when we approved the budget on June 7th. So there's small differences in there for the end of the year approval after June 7th of the adopted budget. For those of you up there.
Well.
So go to, go to, go to the website, go to Finances, and then go to-
The budget.
The budget, and then go to-
PDF, that'll be the last two pages of that PDF.
The last two pages of the PDF called Position Control.
Okay.
And if that doesn't work, call Ken McDonald. Poor guy. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close public comment and move on to new business. We're going to receive an update. You know what, actually, Little Miss Charlie has been the most patient young lady. I'm going to move her up. Can you say thank you? You're welcome. We have, let's see, where are you at? Number 11. Consider waive the full reading, read by title only and introduce the first reading of Ordinance 758. This is the ordinance of the City Council of Crescent City amending Chapter 5.1 of the municipal code, changing the BID business categories and amounts of assessments. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Black. I could have called you Martha.
You could have. He's been calling worse.
He's gotten a quicker response.
I, I'm going to-
I, this is, this is a little odd, but I have, I have two of Mr. Burns's reports in my, oh no, here it is. I take it back, okay. This is an ordinance adopting changes that have already been before you, actually on several occasions, and it is the introduction of the bid assessment ordinance, which makes all of it official, all of the, I think, three previous meetings that you've had on this subject.
Yeah, and so the last one was just the, the public meeting, but because this is actual assessments that we'll be approving final, I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
And I will take Ms. Charlie out to the viewing room if you'll take over.
We got it. Okay, we are on item 11, and Bob, you want to continue since she recused herself?
Uh, yes. The, your council on June 7 received the annual assessment report and adopted a resolution of intent to levy assessments. On July 5, you had a public meeting, which is one of the requirements in the assessment process. On August 2, you had a public hearing, and at each of those, you had before you essentially the same information with regard to the proposals coming from the bid for the assessments for the coming year. Now it's time to put those into ordinance form, and today is the introduction. Your next meeting, I would anticipate if this passes, that you'll have the adoption and then the assessments will take place immediately thereafter.
Okay. So right now, questions from council on this? Charles, do you have any?
No.
Catherine?
What's the ordinance number?
Any other questions, Catherine?
No.
Donna, questions?
No.
Okay, right now, this is just to, we're waiving the full reading and just introducing, introducing this as a, as a public hearing. This has necess, not any, I guess in relation to the, to the vote that was taken, that's kind of a separate issue that, that was brought up back in first part of July. So right now, we're just having public comment on this ordinance. So right now, if there are no questions, I will open public comment for Ordinance 758, and it's setting the bid categories and amounts of assessments. Any public comment? Jesse?
I believe that a lot of people down there in the downtown area seem to have a problem with the person who owns the majority of the business, businesses down there or the buildings. They feel that this person gets a lot from them and yet gives nothing. So I think that maybe we ought to look at this from another perspective, like maybe bid money ought to be coming from that person or the persons that own the buildings because they're the ones that are really making out in the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and bring this back to council and you for the questions.
I just have one comment.
Sure.
I had one of our constituents suggest that people who own property in downtown Crescent City that, that they're empty for long periods of time, that we have a special tax on them. They wanted me to mention that. So I'm mentioning it.
Okay.
Which is kind of a follow-up to Mr. Salisbury's comment.
There is a, there's two different kinds of bids, one formed under the 89 Act and one formed under the 94 Act. And I believe this is an 89 Act. Under the 94 Act, you're actually able to assess real property interest, but I don't believe you can do that under the 89 Act. So this, the 89 Act kind of limits you to assessing the going businesses themselves.
Not who owns the property, but the business that resides at that location.
Yeah, and it's, it's quite a different, it's a, it's a quite different structure. There would be that advantage, I guess, to the 94, you might think of it as an advantage, but it's, it's a whole different structure. It would be quite a project to convert a small bid like this to a different structure, so.
Okay. In, in relation, since this deals with bid in relation to the vote that was taken and submitted to us, it, it looks like a lot of folks are not showing a lot of interest in bid. So to dissolve a bid, that would require a separate action on behalf of bid itself to dissolve it, and that would have to come to us and the City Council would have to dissolve bid, is that correct?
That is correct.
There's a whole process to that, is there not?
Yes.
Okay. So I want to make it clear that that's not what we're talking about tonight. Tonight, we're not talking about dissolving bid or reaffirming bid. We're just talking about the fact that this ordinance is going to be, is up for, for the, to consider it and waive the full reading tonight. We're not going to vote on accepting it or rejecting it, just the fact that it's going public, public reading.
And we had quite a discussion on that in your absence at our last meeting.
Uh-huh. Okay. Any further questions from council then? So we'd entertain a motion just to accept this as a, as a public hearing, to consider it and would waive the full reading, and this is going to be brought back at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Is that correct?
That's right. Final adoption.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from the council? Can I have a poll vote on this, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Burns.
Yes, and for the record, we would just like to note that Mayor Shlong stepped down for a conflict of interest on this item. So it passes, this will be brought back to us at a later date.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I might correct something that I said earlier, I said it would take pa, take effect immediately after the adoption, but the correct answer is that would be, take effect 30 days after.
Doug, could you get Kelly back for us, please? Thank you. Jim, you might as well come up now because we're going to do item 10. As Kelly's coming back, you can be making your way to the podium. You got here a lot faster than Kelly's got back here.
Yep.
Jim, I had two of your reports in my agenda for some reason. And so.
You're having too much fun out there.
I was. Talking about going down the slide at preschool.
Oh, how fun. We're already on item 10 and Jim's up here and-
Awesome.
Welcome, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. Which is forward again.
We should all have Charlie breaks during council meetings. She's so sweet.
Well, it's good to be at this point in this project. You like talking about something that's happened rather than looking forward to something.
Well, I was driving down there the other day and it's just such a big change, such a big difference. It looks so much nicer.
Yeah, it does.
You know, my wife and I left in July and we got back the 8th of August and drove down Front Street, and it was, wow.
Yeah.
It was pretty amazing. Nice.
Well, I'll tell you the, if it's a relief to you, it's a bigger relief to me. And when you look at a project of this size and complexity, it takes a lot of people to get something like this accomplished, and it's, I like to think of the engineers that designed it and kind of put the project together because you have concepts and, and thoughts and designs.
Jim, before you move forward, I'm going to see if I can just kind of break down the summary here and see if I understand it correctly before we can expect the public to understand it correctly. The way I read this in layman's terms is that we have, we have a change order that is going to total approximately $42,000. That change order is going to take our project to 37,3, let's see, sorry.
I have a-
37, 37,626. We're still on budget.
Yeah.
And then in addition to that, we're going to look at some purchase orders for things that have come up along the way and/or that need to be taken care of. They're going to total about $109,000.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, there are some projects of larger capacity that are over $600,000 that you'd like the council to consider.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have, I'm summarizing a few things, talking about the overall project, then I'm going to get down to some particulars. I'm going to ask the council for, as we, as you see, we're just about done with the project. As we finish a project, then we talk about the end of things and the final billings and, and some of those things. So that's kind of what we're doing tonight. And just like I was saying, I have, I was surprised to see Ron Walls here in town, and Ron was one of the ones with me when I first got here seven years ago. Actually, I, I went to a meeting when I was still working with Stan Tech, and so Ron was at those meetings and that was about seven and a half years ago. And, and then Ward was also at those meetings, and so a couple of the guys that were at the initial meetings when I was in, that was in Santa Rosa. And so we went through this whole project together from concept. Now here we are, all these years later, finishing this project up. But what I was saying is, even though y'all don't hear about things that happen every day in a project, but a project this size where you have so many different trades working on the project, from electrical folks to mechanical, which are the motors and, and plumbers and all of those guys, to the buildings, there's issues that come up every day, and these guys and I are making decisions during the construction of the project every day, and there is major to, or I should say minor, to somewhat major crises every day to deal with. And so we've developed a rapport and a relationship to where we've been able to work through all these things as this project has gone along to where you haven't had to deal with a lot of these things, and Bob hasn't had to deal with them thankfully, and Rod has dealt with several of them, but not all that many of them, and we've been able to get through this project to where now we're coming towards the end and we're able to talk about these last issues. And so we'll go through some of these things and talk about them.
Great.
Current financial status. I had these rounded off, but talking to Ken, he likes getting right down to it, as you can see. So in our current fund, sewer fund investment accounts, we have $2,941,000. And the SRF payments due the city, $617,000. And what that basically means is we pay the contractor, we request money from SRF, then that comes a little later on, and so that, there, there's a little bit of lag, and so that's why that's still owed the city. And then what we owe Umpqua Bank is that $1,988,000. So if we quit working right now, we could anticipate having about 1.57- So if we quit working right now, we could anticipate having about $1.570 million in our, in the bank sewer fund. Now, so we're just gonna keep that in mind as we go on in these discussions. The Wallen Construction contract, the original contract amount, 37,739,742 dollars. Change orders 1 through 14 ended up being a minus $160,687. And you can see what...
Hey Jim, could you switch slides?
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes, excuse me.
That's okay.
I'm looking down at my sheet. I have to look up. So, so that brings the current contract amount to the $37,578,766. So we're under that $160,000. And so as you mentioned earlier, change order 15 is $42,762, which leaves about $118,000 some odd dollars below the original contract amount.
I think that's incredible. We're 15 change orders later into a three-year, $42 million project and we are still under the projected budget. And I just have to say thank you to you, to Mr. Stover, to Brown and Caldwell, to Ron Walls, to Wallen Construction, you know, everybody. I mean, it's, it's been an amazing project. And obviously, the relationships and the hard work has paid off. So I just want to say thank you.
I would echo that, Madam Mayor.
And I will say, we have about, the question of how many issues are still in contention? Because there's always some issues in contention. We have about $180,000 in contention. And so Ward and Rod and I will talk...
What is that, about a half a percent of the project?
Yeah, yeah. So that really doesn't amount to anything.
Right.
On the scope of things. And so that's the sort of thing you sit down and you work out fairly easily on a project like this. You expect on a job like this, you might have a million dollars in contention or more. And the reason there isn't very much in contention is we worked through things as we went along. And we had a, the contractor has been... We've, we had weekly meetings with him. We insisted, I mean, I shouldn't say we insisted. It's been something that we agreed to. And Ward and I and the owners of the companies had weekly meetings. And if there were issues, we dealt with them. There's been certain things we couldn't get through and that's why there are the contested items. And we're not gonna get through them. And so we're gonna have to come to an agreement on them. So that's the way it always is on a contract. You're not gonna agree. There's always things you can't agree to. But when it's only this much, then you're gonna come to an agreement in the end. All right, the proposed projects.
Click.
Click. Thank you. The proposed projects.
You know, before we moved on to proposed, council, do you have any questions on change order 15 or the purchase orders?
I wanted to go to the proposed projects before the purchase orders, but I'll come back to the purchase orders in the end.
All right, any questions on change order 15?
No.
Okay.
I have some questions. I wanted some clarification. If it's $118,000 below the original contract price and there were no things in contention, what happens to that $118,000?
Well, then you just wouldn't be paid that.
So if we had saved a million dollars on this contract, you're saying that we wouldn't be paying Wallen the million dollars?
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. The digester boiler. Now, the question might come up, well, why wasn't the boiler in the original design? We started designing this project about six years ago and the boiler looked a little better than this then. And we were trying to save as much money as we could. This is really an O&M issue, operation and maintenance issue. And it just needs to be replaced. It's getting old. And we've had to fix it about every two or three months and it's just time to be replaced. And so...
Jim, if you didn't replace it, what would the consequences be?
Well, you just keep fixing it.
I think I read, like, within a year, it was, it would be falling apart, right? Isn't that what you said?
It's falling apart. What happens is, the problem with these boilers is it runs methane gas and it's a dirty gas. And it, and it is, it just starts rotting the boiler out. Yeah, it just corrodes the boiler. And it just gets worse and worse until you have no choice but to replace it. And so it's about, I say 70,000, we have a quote for 57,000. And then it's gonna take a little bit to get it put together. It'll probably be something like 64,000. So that's why I have 70,000 here. So that's what we're talking about for the boiler.
But if the boiler continued on and we didn't replace it, there's a real likelihood that it could result in explosion or fire or damage?
Well, it certainly could rupture and it could hurt somebody, yeah.
Okay.
Now, the next issue is painting the existing structures in the area. We, I fixed a lot of the wood and we had to replace a lot of the various wooden parts of the existing buildings. And then, so you're gonna see different colors on some of the buildings. And then the concrete, you see off to the left, the digester hasn't been painted in a while. And so, and you see right at the bottom of the picture how the concrete looks. And you see the new building straight ahead. This is down inside the Influent Pump Station. There's three different floors. So...
Three different levels going down?
Three levels. And so you have three floors to paint. I'm not talking about floors like what you're standing on, but three different levels to paint. And the reason, we saved money on the expense of, we built inside the existing structure. And by building inside the existing structure, you save money by doing that. But you have the existing structure there and it needs painting. And so...
Isn't painting part of regular repairs and maintenance for city staff?
If they had time...
I think that, I think that is the issue, is that the operations and maintenance was not performed over time, over many years, that led us to this situation.
Well, I think what Donna's asking is, rather than going out to bid on this painting project, is it possible to have city staff do the work?
I think if we wanted to wait over a long enough period of time, they would have time to do it.
How long a period of time do you project?
Well... What I wanted to do is have a grand opening for the treatment plant where everything was painted, looked good, to where we could have a grand opening. A lot of these structures also are like three levels high. I don't even know whether our guys, it's safe for our guys to paint them. As you're gonna look, you see, straight ahead there, that is probably 40 feet high. It isn't, I'm not feeling real good about even what I'm saying right now because it's not real safe.
Jim, we took a tour as a council with you early on in the project, down into the bottom of this pit, if you will. And that's the pit you're talking about.
You remember seeing it, didn't you, Charles? Well, how do you feel about it? Do you think it should be professionally painted? This concrete is not easy to paint. They use a special paint and so on on it. I'm thinking it probably should be professionally painted.
Probably be a lot faster, too.
Oh, faster for sure. They could do it within a couple of weeks. It'll take my guys, I'll bet you, a couple of years to get, by the time they do it in their spare time and...
And we're still paying for it. I mean, to me, a lot of these things in reviewing the list of purchase orders and change order items is a lot about, like the pool, when you just redid the pool. You couldn't redo the pool and leave it in the old building. I mean, you're obliged to bring certain things up to code and so it's conforming with the new facilities. Otherwise, you're gonna spend good money after the fact trying to go backwards to fix things and correct things.
I don't think it'd be cost effective for our staff to do it.
I don't think they would do the kind of job we really want done either. This is not, I think you need professionals doing this work.
So when you say professionals, are you gonna hire a local painting contractor? Or is there some kind of professional concrete painting company?
This is, let me clarify what I'm saying on all these projects. Wallen Construction may bid on some of these, but I doubt it. I think we will probably go out to bid on all this work and get local and/or regional contractors to bid on this work.
Well, I personally would rather see it go to bid so that everybody has a chance at bidding.
Yeah, because Wallen wants his contract to be done now and to move out.
Don't blame him.
And so he can get his retention. You know, he wants his contract done and that's that, so...
When is the grand opening scheduled for?
Excuse me?
We don't have, we don't have a date yet. He's trying to get everything wrapped up before he sets a date for us.
No, there's still some issues he's working through, so...
Would it be fall, winter, what?
Late summer, early fall.
This year?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we've, let's move to number three, sledge transfer modifications. Oh, you have more pictures for painting?
Oh, just a couple of pictures, just showing you. You see, this is not easy to paint. I mean, it's out over the...
Is there any way to break it down to where maybe even more than one company could get a contract?
I don't think it's, it's so much work that you need more than one company. I think a company, when I talked to a local company, they said they could do it in about eight days, seven or eight days. So I don't know that it's all that much effort.
Okay.
And I think what we need to do is probably get a per hour price and then get them in and have them start working. Get per hour prices from several companies and then have them...
Jim, would any of this be helped by just pressure washing first and then holding off on the painting another year?
No. Now, I'm gonna have Ward and/or Ron talk on these next two items. I don't like monopolizing the microphone.
Yeah. Did I leave out Kennedy Jenks?
That's okay. He mentioned my name.
That's all that matters, right?
Yes, that's right. Thanks, Jim. So the sledge transfer modifications, as Jim alluded to...
Ron, do you want to just introduce yourself for the record?
Sorry, I'm Ron Walls with Kennedy Jenks. Put this up here.
Thank you.
All right, so what you're looking at is the sledge transfer pumps. And there, this is part of the equipment that's located inside the digester control building. When we went and scoped the project and were developing the plans, there are portions of the project like this that we did not do a lot of work in that area. We did the roofs of the digesters, but there wasn't a whole lot of contractor work. And at the time, five years ago, staff indicated that, quite frankly, they could keep up with these things over time or improve them once the contractor got done. So also as Jim mentioned, we were trying to cut things out of the project or not do things that, not do everything because we couldn't afford everything. So those areas that could either be done on an O&M type basis or something of this magnitude where the staff felt that they could replace the pump, replace the valve, get new systems over time on, on something that they could handle, were not put into the construction contract. There's a couple of things, there's actually a number of areas where the primary clarifier mechanisms aren't being replaced, the secondary clarifier mechanisms aren't being replaced, some blowers weren't replaced, some pumps weren't replaced. Pretty much if it wasn't on its last leg, let's see if we can get through a little longer, either until the staff can get to it or till they got to the next construction contract in a future phase. So this is one of those areas where, quite frankly, and it does, also as Jim mentioned, digesters are very corrosive. And it's reached its useful life and it's reached a time where it needs to be replaced by, by somebody. And it's gone to a point where it's really of a magnitude where staff could use some, some real assistance of a professional getting in there and doing the work. I mean, now they've seen as a real contractor comes and gets stuff done, a real contractor can go do stuff a lot faster than your staff.
Are you talking about the boiler at this point?
Boiler is another example. The boiler is another example where not only was it something that the staff felt that they could keep up with over time, and that's a long time ago. There were decisions made where if it didn't impact the effluent quality, it wasn't going into the project. The cease and desist order was, you know, to affect the effluent quality. Quite frankly, this doesn't affect the liquid going out, it affects the solids. And if we lose the boiler, we lose the heat. We lose the heat, we lose digestion. Digestion removes roughly 40% of your solids. And the net financial result of losing the boiler would be that you'd be paying 40% more for solids disposal than you're doing now because the boiler's helping keeping those digesters heated, getting the bugs to remove the solids and turning it into methane gas instead of something you have to haul to the landfill.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Okay. You're on sledge transfers now, right?
Yeah, we're on sledge transfers. I mean, we're on sledge transfers, now you got that. Chemical disposal system. The membrane bioreactors that are now installed and operating. The membranes get two chemical baths, what's called maintenance cleanings. One is high strength chlorine and the other is low strength acetic acid. And what it does is, one takes off the kind of the minerals that build up and the other takes off the biological that builds up. And they have to be cleaned anywhere from every one to three months. Several years ago, when we were first starting out with the MBRs, we told by the supplier, don't worry about the chemicals, we can put them right through the plant. And quite frankly, our calculations show you can push them right through the plant. But there's a risk to that because essentially you're taking high strength chemicals, putting, dumping them on the plant and hoping they don't come out the other end. Now, from the calculations, that shouldn't happen, but you're still dealing with real issues. Real staff have to deal with that. And what's happened over the last five years is several things. One is we've had several years of ongoing violations at the plant. We want, we don't want to do something else that can cause a violation. And we've also gotten more feedback from membrane users who were small in number now and greater in number to this point, where end user recommendation has been, I would have, actually it's part of the supplier's new recommendations, to have a waste chemical storage system so that these high strength chemicals, after being used by the membranes, can be put in a tank, they can also be used again, or just slowly bled through the plant so we don't have a risk of forcing some... so we don't have a risk of forcing something through in just a couple of hours and causing an unnecessary violation. So, this is essentially an improvement that's been recommended through the last five, six years of experience that's happened with this technology and what we've learned at other plants that have been employing this.
If you...excuse me.
Go ahead.
If you use...I'm assuming you can't combine those into one tank. You'd have to have a tank for...
We especially don't want to combine them in one tank. They will explode.
That's right. So, if you have a tank dedicated to the high concentration chlorine and it comes back such and such percentage, I'm assuming you can reuse that to clean another membrane within two, three months?
Well, a lot of that's actually thought to be being used to help clean out the snails and the RBCs. So, there's other uses around the plant for it to be used. And also, the design currently includes two tanks and dedicated pumps and dedicated piping and lockouts so the chemicals don't mix because if they do, there'll be a meltdown.
And my understanding from reading this, the cost of this is a hundred and fifty thousand approximately.
Oh, this one's two fifty approximately. I think it's...I think it might even be...
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred, yes.
Oh, I'm on sludge transfer modification.
Yes. So, we're essentially looking at putting out two dedicated chemicals.
Did we skip sludge transfer?
We ju...well, we did it here.
Okay, but I thought the sludge transfer was leaking.
Well, there probably are some leaks. It's so old. And it's, again, you know, when we decided five years ago, let's try to keep up with it, it's hard to keep up with stuff that at that time was thirty years old, now it's thirty-five years old.
Okay. I'm going to back up just slightly to sludge transfer.
Okay.
Just because it's something I'm trying to help deal with on the solid waste disposal end of it in my other hat. So, is that a new problem that it's leaking? Because I'm just wondering if it has anything to do with the way it's now...it's...
De-watered?
Yes, it's more de-watered now, right? So, is that causing any kind of an issue?
The more de-watered is a result of better polymer mixing. You mix polymer with the chemical with the sludge when you de-water it. And so, there's actually been an improved polymer mixing system that does a better job of adding a better polymer, so we're getting drier sludge.
It's drier now, right?
It's drier now, less volume, unless you have to pay to dispose of it, yes.
Right.
These sludge transfer pumps simply pump the digested sludge to the belt press.
Okay, I was just thinking in my mind, so I was processing all this in my...I was wondering if, because it's thicker, if it's causing expansion or something that's causing the leak.
No, this is upstream. This is upstream of that part of the process.
That was my engineering, you know, background.
Ron, getting back to the chemical disposal system for three hundred thousand?
Certainly.
The hundred and twenty thousand dollar fine, how does that work? Is that net? Will it be...is it four hundred and twenty thousand less a hundred and twenty equals three hundred thousand? Is that how you calculated it?
And I'll ask Jim to correct me, but my understanding is with the compliance project, you can apply ninety percent of your fine to a project that's on site that'll address the compliance issue. So, it's not four hundred and twenty. My understanding with our numbers, you could apply ninety percent of the hundred and twenty to the three hundred thousand dollar project.
Right. That was my next question, and that is the chemical disposal system would actually then be a net expense of about two hundred thousand?
Rough numbers, yes.
And are these eight thousand gallon tanks new?
Yeah, they're new, but I think in this case...hey, Ron, don't run off. I think we can, whether it's ninety percent, which would leave twelve thousand, or whether it's all of it, I'm not exactly sure, but it takes care of the fine.
So, do we already have these tanks on the premises?
No, this is...they're asking for us to consider these extra projects.
Correct. There is a six thousand gallon tank on the premises. However, the membrane tanks are seven thousand gallons, so we need eight thousand gallon tanks to hold the waste chemicals.
And what happens to the six thousand gallon tank that's currently there?
That's going to be...I think you have plans for that, Jim, for the six thousand gallon tank. Isn't that going into service? My understanding is it's going into service somewhere else within the facilities. I don't know exactly what a six thousand gallon tank is. Up till very shortly, we were going to use it at the plant, bear with me here, and we were going to capture six thousand gallons of filtrate that comes off that belt filter press is doing a great job because we have an ammonia issue, a long-term ammonia issue. With the new process doing so well, we don't think we need that six thousand gallon tank there. Now, it's available to be used for some other purpose. If it were big enough to use, we'd use it.
Okay, any further questions on the chemical disposal system from the council? Okay, let's move on to expensive furniture.
We have several rooms that need furniture. This is a room where the operators sit around and operate the plant. And then have a break room.
What fancy.
Yeah, exactly, and...
And your point is what?
Yeah, what's wrong with that? Just bring in your cooler.
We have a conference room that would have a...need a conference table and chairs. And we have a large conference room that would probably need fifty chairs and twenty tables, and I need a desk and chairs. I had Jim Aboidis look at everything and give me some numbers. I had Debbie Stover come over and look at the whole layout. And so, these numbers I give on all of this is so that we can get bids and get something. And what I would propose is that Charles and Slert and I could work on this furniture thing. I'm not...
He's not into interior design.
He could be. I don't want to be...I'm not a guy that likes being responsible for this because I know this could get me in trouble, so I would just assume somebody helped me with the furniture part, so.
Well, why don't you leave that up to the person that bids on the contract to tell you your space...what you need for your space?
I'd just say, these are the rooms I want furnished, I want a desk and...
Well, no, I mean, we always do that.
You have to put together kind of a list of what you need, but I mean, that person can come in and...
They do that. They always do that. But I also have to give direction. They always ask, what are you looking for? And I say, well, this is a treatment plant. I want chairs. I don't want cloth chairs because I don't want it to take on any odors from a treatment plant. I want chairs to look like this and there's going to...you know, I mean, we take...we always...
Sounds like you got it under control, Jim.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a treatment. It's a treatment plant. It's a treatment plant and you don't want crappy furniture, right?
Maybe Dennis is the guy I need.
Yeah, right.
I think it's Dennis's turn to go, yeah.
I just want to remind us that we do have a beer budget with champagne taste, so maybe someplace in the middle, maybe even fine-used furniture.
Well, we always look for something that would be decent quality, and if we can get used furniture, that would be very good. If I can get good used furniture, I would. That would be something I would look for. If we can find, because a lot of people have gone out of business recently, and if they have good used furniture, we would get it. I wouldn't want the city's used furniture.
The characterization of champagne taste, I don't see that anywhere, you know, that's been provided us by the staff. So, that's one person's interpretation. I think it's talking about order of magnitude and utilitarian products, furniture, fixture and equipment, intended improvements are not traditionally in the major contract.
All right, you can use Charles.
Thank you.
Well, just remember, Charles, that when our constituents come up here and tell us that they don't have money to buy meds and food, they're going to get mad if we go overboard on this.
I don't think there's any...ever been an indication that anybody is trying or intends to go overboard on anything. This is about getting a project completed. And the most important thing to remember is that it's...project is within budget. It's under budget and it's ahead of schedule, even with this change order.
Well, I don't agree with that. You know, we looked at those original workshop photos and it was supposed to be completed in, what, March or May of 2010, and now we're in August, so I don't see where it's completed on time.
Based on the contract, the delayed days, the rain days, they're still within their contract or ahead of schedule.
And if we've got a hundred and eighty thousand in contention and we're a hundred and eighteen below original contract, we could be over budget.
But, and I understand what you're saying, Donna, but the point is that with this magnitude of a project, normalcy in this kind of construction, in this kind of a project, in this large of a project, your contention, your list of contentions between the agency and the contractor is usually much larger. So, that's why we're feeling lucky that it's that small.
Well, I know that I've had a number of people already call me about this possibility of spending another two-thirds of a million dollars to finish this up, and they're not happy about it.
Well, this is actually not to finish the project, it's to enhance the project even more. It's to...pardon me?
Okay, and then I have these aeration blowers. And I have two blowers, and this is the last items. This is...they're two of the same blowers and they look identical. They're very old and very loud and very hot. And recently, they've been giving us some trouble and we would like to replace them while we can and we would like to get a couple of...they're so critical to the plant. They're the thing that blows air up through the RBCs as well as the primary clarifiers. And so, that's what we're talking about here. And you can see what they look like. So, that's the list now.
The conference room that you were talking about, is that...Rod, is that the conference room that we talked about allowing the community to use?
Yes, that'll be a place where we will have future workshops at the council and we'll make it available within reason to other organizations.
Will this be at no charge to the community?
I don't think we've determined that yet.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Okay, so we are now through the fiscal impacts.
What I wanted to look at before we discussed all of this is how does this impact the budget? If we spent this money, where would we be before we actually talk about it? So, we know how it impacts the money overall. And in order to know that, I don't want to look at it right now. What I want to look at it is a year from now when we make our first SRF payment. Right now, as I indicated, we have in essence one million five hundred and seventy thousand. And this purchase order is for a hundred and ten thousand. These projects, if you approved all of them, would be for six hundred and sixty thousand. The SRF payment is for one million eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And what I...what Ken and I agreed to to use as a...from now until next year, what we're accumulating, which is the difference between what we're bringing in and our O and M costs, which basically is the debt service, is one million seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So, you're keeping a debt service of one seven in reserve?
Which, you know, we're accumulating.
Right. You expect to accumulate that by August of 2011?
Yeah, we'll probably accumulate more than that, but that's what we're saying because we're conservative folks.
Does the forty-two thousand fit into here?
No, that's from the contract.
Still under contract, okay.
Yes, not a different pot.
Gotcha.
So, that leaves us a total in our reserves...
Change order is what I was actually talking about.
Yeah, that's from the change order. That's from the contract. That's from the SRF money. That's borrowed money. That's a different pot. This leaves us a total in our reserves of six hundred and fifty-three thousand. That's August of next year.
And that's conservative, Jim, right?
That's conservative.
And the Will Dan report recommended that you maintain four hundred and fifty thousand.
That's going to be my next slide.
Well, when was the date of the Will Dan report?
Well, that Will Dan report isn't...it has a date, of course, of about two years ago, Eric. But what that did was it projected a...it's a study that gives us a budget that we need to live by from now on. And for August of 2011, what is the projected amount we should have in reserves? And it was four hundred and forty-seven thousand, which the difference there is two hundred and six thousand. So, we have more than we're supposed to have. And that number, as I wrote down below here, doesn't include any money we receive from outside sources for capacity charges or anything else that comes in. Plus, I am thinking I probably understated a lot of things and probably overstated the cost. So, I'm thinking we're conservative in our numbers, so that's kind of where we are.
Can I just interject a couple things? If the Will Dan report was done two years ago, the economic conditions were better. Right now, we keep...are still on a downward slide. And I was talking to some real estate agents in the community just this past week about foreclosures, et cetera, and she says they're still expecting another million foreclosures in the country, and we've been affected by that a great deal. And so, I think we need to be cognizant that that's going to affect our bottom line.
Bottom line of...
Of ratepayers' ability to pay their sewer fees.
If their home is foreclosed on?
Yeah.
They wouldn't then have a sewer fee?
No, then you don't have a sewer fee.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. You don't have income.
How many...do you know how many foreclosures we've had in this county?
I don't. But it's a continuing downward spiral. We haven't hit bottom yet.
Could I ask a question about this slide, though? The projected reserve is not based on any new capacity charges coming in, right? Any new capacity charges would add to your projected reserve?
That's correct.
And some of those capacity charges that we can foresee that hopefully will be taking place will be the difference in the Delmont Point Apartments and what they paid previously and what they'll actually be hooking up to, and then...
We're still looking at that, but that's certainly a possibility.
Yeah, I'm just talking about possibilities. I'm thinking Elk Valley Rancheria, but, you know, that's a year-to-year kind of guesstimate as to when they're actually going to start construction. So, there will be some capacity charges collected, hopefully, in the future, the next year or two.
And that was...I'm glad you brought that up, Bob, because that was my...one of my last points is about the hookup capacity fees. How are we going to allocate those? We have one eleven percent expansion figure, okay, and then, which I think is fictitious personally. So, are we going to allocate hookup fees towards paying part of this loan back?
Rod, could you answer that?
Yeah, you've asked that in recent meetings, and my answer last time was correct. The connection fees go into the enterprise fund, sewer enterprise fund. They are not earmarked for specific things. So, to answer your question, yes, some of the connection money will be used to pay the loan back each year, but we don't take, you know, let's say a small residential project goes into place and we collect sixty thousand dollars.
Well, you have to remember that some of those revenues generated... Well, you have to remember that some of those revenues generated through capacity charges are, we have an expense as well in hooking that customer up. They're not just money that gets dumped into the sewer enterprise fund and just sits there. We also actually hook those people up, and there's expenses to that.
But roughly, if we're talking about 10 grand for a hookup, and we are going to have 1,000 hookups once the project is signed off, aren't we talking about 10 million dollars?
Which project?
What?
If we're talking about 10 grand roughly as our hookup fee, I'm talking rough numbers. I'm not talking about the expenses against the 10 grand, just in rough numbers. And it's been expressed here before that we're going to have 1,000 hookups available to us when the project is completed. Is that correct?
She's asking, how many hookups is the city going to have available once the wastewater treatment plant is completed?
Well, I don't think that is really the issue, is how many people are going to come and hook up is the issue.
Right.
That's what you need to look at. If nobody comes, I mean, you hope people come and hook up.
There isn't going to be a fixed number. There isn't going to be 1,000. There's going to be as many hookups as we can absorb up until the plant starts to have performance issues, or we can foresee performance issues on the horizon. It could be 900, it could be 1,900.
And you may be thinking about, for instance, when we had cease and desist orders in the past, they would, and we would address some of our issues at the plant, then they would say, okay, now you can have 500 more.
Right.
At that point, then, yes, we had a specific number of hookups we were allowed.
Right.
But that was with a plant that was like, you know...
So, is this kind of a fluid number once it's completed?
Well, what's going to happen now? We've been in some early discussions with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and they indicated in those early discussions that they will probably take the cease and desist order off of us after, when we get our new permit.
Permit.
Okay, so getting back to the theoretical discussion about hookup fees and repaying the state revolving loan fund, theoretically, if there's 10 million dollars coming in from hookups, will that go towards paying down the loan? That's my question.
A lot of it will, sure, yeah, because it all goes into the sewer enterprise fund pot. It's not tracked separately as, oh, we're going to set aside the 500,000 this year that came in for connection fees just to pay back the debt service on the loan.
Okay.
But the debt service on the loan is going to be paid from the enterprise fund each year, and part of that money that is going to be...
Well, we were talking about separating it out between a capital improvement fund for future expansion and talking about paying for current expansion, correct? And are you saying it's all going to be lump sum? I don't think so. Isn't there supposed to be a portion that goes into a capital improvement slot versus the sewer enterprise fund?
Yeah, and I suppose every council will decide how that money is going to be allocated as the years go by.
And I think Ken is good in that in all of our funds, to set aside certain amount of money for lots of capital improvements, whether that be painting, replacing boilers, replacing an engine on a truck.
Cars.
So, that's ongoing. So, if we have 10 new hookups this year and 51 year, there's no set percentage of those that's going to be paid to the SRF. It'll just be...
Yeah. I think the positive thing about tonight is that we're being presented with a little over half a million dollars in projects that are maintenance projects that previous councils didn't authorize, which is why over 20 or 30 or 40 years, we are sitting here with a plant that has just literally fallen apart around us. So, I think it's a positive thing that we're able to take it in these small chunks and maintain the structure. And that's what I hope this council and future councils will take to heart. It is our responsibility to take the recommendation of staff when things need to be maintained and fixed, so that we aren't putting a council 20 years down the road in a situation that we've been faced with. So, thank you.
And Mr. Barnes has been conservative in his numbers, and he's actually, there was some dialogue in the staff report talking about future operations and maintenance. And I mean, I can see him developing a whole program for future operation maintenance. Just think of this new facility, similar to a US naval ship, and the US Navy understands operations and maintenance. And what we've done is we've integrated a new, brand-new facility into a dilapidated, antiquated, original facility. And it's the interface of the old, broken-down, lack of operation maintenance with this new facility. And so, as a public works director, chief engineer, Mr. Barnes' responsibility to this council is to come to us and tell us, these are my recommendations and why. And it's about preventative maintenance, trying to avoid penny wise and pound foolish decisions by putting something off and doing it later when it costs more as compared to when you have the contractors on site finishing up the project.
Yeah. So, moving on from here, Jim, are you going to actually go out to bid and bring those back to the council for approval?
If you say I can, I will. And I'll take each one, I'll bring it back individually.
I personally think the digester looks like, to me, it's a priority. The chemical disposal system obviously is important, the sledge transfer system is important. The furniture seems a little high, but I haven't priced office furniture lately. And the other thing, the painting, if it's going to take someone eight days, $70,000 seems a lot of, like a lot of money, too. So, that's just where I'm coming from.
I think by putting it out to bid, that will tell the tale. And I believe that it would be cost-effective for us to put the painting out to bid. I agree with Mr. Barnes' recommendation that it would be much wiser to put it out to bid and have the painting done by a professional, because I think it's much more complex and we appreciate. And I think also putting the furniture out to bid is the best way to resolve this. I see no point in scrounging around for furniture, because we want it to last. So, I think that's the wisest solution. So, I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Barnes to go ahead and...
Well, actually, if I could stop you, we're going to go back to change order 15 first and take it in order. So, change, first I would need, actually, you know what? First, I'm going to take public comment. Let me get back to my process here. Is there any public comment on the wastewater treatment plant financial summary? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. First, I would need a motion to approve change order 15.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Okay. Would you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westfall?
Abstain.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalhoub?
Yes, thank you. Next, we have a list of purchase order items, which start with T and M 23 and go through T and M 81 for a total of 109,525,08.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westfall?
Abstain.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalhoub?
Yes, thank you. And last, Rod, on the, where's my list? Sorry. On the proposed projects, can I lump those all together as just an authorization to, for staff to go out to bid, or do I need to do it individually?
No, I think you can lump, based on the recommendation of the director.
Okay. All right.
I move that we have the proposed projects listed 1 through 6 to total an approximate 660,000 to have staff put those out to bid.
I'll second that.
Okay, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalhoub?
Yes, thank you. Jim, once again, congratulations to you, your staff, the subcontractors, the contractor, everyone that's put a lot of effort into this. It's been a very long haul, and I'm looking forward to that grand opening. And we'll see you at the next council meeting with some bids for us. Thanks. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to item 12, we have a city fee schedule to consider and adopt, Resolution 2010-24, changes to summary schedule of fees, fines, and penalties for the city. Mr. McDonald.
What we have here is, it's been several years since we've passed a comprehensive fee schedule in one section. What used to be done is they would pass it in conjunction with the budget, but we really didn't have it in one easy location. So, while we were working with the ad hoc committee for the cultural center, Bridgette and I have been working to kind of put this all in one book. So, really, the impetus that motivated this forward was we got some consensus with the cultural center ad hoc committee. So, those items are in here. And if you look at the actual schedule itself, on the right-hand side where it has proposed fees, that's where you're going to find changes. So, where you have blanks on the right-hand side, that means the left-hand side is what we're currently charging. We tried to go through these and make sure we had a few of them corrected, and there was a couple of minor mistakes, like on page 3 of 11 under the finance department section. This is something that I just found out. It's called an orthophoto elevation data set. It comes on optical media. It should be 325, not 3.25. So, the decimal place just got put in the wrong place. And then, a couple above that, it should say photographic aerial map, it's larger than eight and a half by 14. So, it's just some real minor changes that we noticed.
I had a change as well, I think, under building rental fees for our cultural center plan. The key damage deposit with alcohol should be 5.75 and without 75.
Exactly.
Yeah, they're reversed.
What page is that?
Um, three.
Bottom of page 3 of 11.
It just, the alcohol versus no alcohol charges are reversed.
All right.
And other than the cultural center, there was a couple other fees that we changed in there that are different, new, and unique, and I'd kind of like to talk through those.
I think, let's start with the cultural center, and then we will move on to your delinquent and late account.
Yeah, that's the big changes.
Yeah. So, as you know, I appointed myself and Mr. Slert to an ad hoc committee to address our fees with the cultural center. We were losing about 60, 60,000? 25? Revenues were 60, I guess. We were losing about 25,000 a year on the rental of the building due to large costs, mostly because it's an older building and it's very hard to heat. And so, we sat down and took a look at the actual cost to operate and what we were actually charging. We also looked at a survey of all other facilities in the county and compared their uses, their occupancy, and their charges to what we were charging, and found that we were able to adjust some of our prices to hopefully start recouping some of those losses, but at the same time, not putting ourselves out of business by raising the rates so much that people wouldn't rent the hall. So, we're still very competitive compared to other facilities in the area, and yet we were able to, I mean, just some simple things, like to use the kitchen and all the dishes, we used to charge like 20 bucks, and now we charge a little more than that. So, anyway, we, and we tried to make some of the processes simpler as well for the people that actually rent the building. So, you can actually see the fee changes here. Current fee is in that middle column, and the proposed fee by the ad hoc committee is to the right of that. And so, we'll take that first. Are there any questions of the council on those changes?
No.
Not on page 3.
Glad you looked at it. It's important.
Yeah. Okay. Next, I'm going to let Ken discuss this. One of the other just main changes is that we have not in the past charged any late fees. So, you're going to address that.
Yeah, right now, the only real late fee we have for anything that's billed, and this goes into the utility and regular billing, we only charged a $4 late fee for a bill that was late. If somebody had a $100 bill for the month or a $10,000 bill for the month, they still got charged a $4 late fee. And that's not really fair to all the ratepayers. And what really I'm trying to do with this is make a financial incentive for those people that pay early, where they're getting a benefit by paying early, because they do help us out, because we incur those services. Say, at the beginning of day one, we don't send them a bill till day 30, and so by the time that that's passed due on day 60, we've now gone two months since when we first started providing the service and incurring costs.
Right.
So, it's kind of a way of bringing balance and nexus to that.
So, obviously, that wouldn't be in this, because it would be a revenue that...
You can find it on that page 3, but it's also in the utility section, too. And what we've set up was a 10% penalty if the first month delinquent. That one's basically if somebody got sent a $10,000 bill and they didn't pay it within our 30-day timeframe, they would get $100 tacked on to that bill. And then, every month after that, it would be 1% added on. So, that would equate to a 12% annual amount. But we weren't, if you didn't pay your bill in the first month, you got a $4 charge, that same charge just set there. No additional amounts accumulated towards that.
You mentioned an incentive for people to pay early.
Well, it becomes a financial disincentive if you pay late, but that kind of, I mean, because it makes it real hard, where like a normal business would offer a 2% discount if you pay it within 10 days. We don't really, utilities don't really have that mechanism where you can give a discount, and it would be really cumbersome for the account, for the financial software system, to bill that type of discount in.
10% seems kind of high to me. And the reason I say that is I've worked in with contracts and administrative and federal, state, and when you have large contracts, they almost never pay within 30 days. You're usually looking at 60 to 90 to get contracts through the process and actually paid. I know that even us as a city don't pay our bills within 30 days. So...
Try to, but...
We try, but we don't always do it.
Right.
And so...
And we can pay late fees, maybe not in the 10%.
If someone owes us $10,000 and they pay in 45 days, they're going to pay a lot.
$11,000.
Yeah.
Under this fee schedule.
Yeah, so, I'm not really in favor of that.
That one's definitely a high number, and that's why I wanted to bring that up and discuss it. Rod and I had talked about if we put something like this in process, because it is so new, maybe not enforcing it with an iron fist and allowing, you know, to credit that money back, but kind of get people weaned into that situation. I have been at other utilities that, when I was in another one, we were electric provider, and we had that same flat percent penalty. But you pay, for electric, it was even worse. You pay 100% of your cost on day one, and you're not going to get that bill until day 60. So, there was a big nexus between this, whereas we kind of got a sliding scale. We don't, we don't have to pay anybody our water costs upfront. It's our operations and maintenance, our labor, and all those types of things. So, if we were to reduce it down, there would be no problem with that. What I would suggest is maybe have a minimum of maybe $4 or $5, so that even if, you know, if you had it at 5%, and they had a $100 amount passed due, it would only be $5. But then, if they had a $50 passed due, if it was 5%, it'd be $2.50. It really, you needed at least... It really, you needed at least $4 or more to make it, at least cover our costs for generating that delinquent bill and sending it out a second time.
So tell me the difference, maybe I'm, it's getting late, but 10% of the amount delinquent for the first month delinquent, what is, how is that different than 1% of the delinquent amount after the first month delinquent?
If you did it in 1%, then for every $100 bill, you'd only give them a dollar late charge. You could do a 1% late charge with a minimum five, it would still be better than the system we have now, and maybe not overly cost prohibitive to some of our large users, the prison and a few others, which the state is having some difficulty in paying their bills, so. But it's not fair that the rest of the ratepayers of the community pay for somebody that's paying maybe tardier than the rest of them.
That's what. But what's the difference between the late charge and the penalty? I guess I'm not sure.
Well, the penalty, it probably, it was just the terminology that we've, we've used, but it really could be just a carrying interest on a passed due amount, and it'd basically be a 60-day passed due. It's going to continue to accumulate interest charges on that unpaid balance. So we could, and these descriptions too. I mean, we put this together, it was relatively fast, so if we want a better description that's more descriptive and easier for the public.
I guess I was just trying to understand when you apply a late charge or when you apply a penalty.
Well, late charge would be applied first, and then, so, say January 1, you get a bill, you don't pay it on February 1, you would get a pen- a late charge. Under this, a 10% late charge. Then on the very next month, you'd get a 1% amount added to that balance. And then that kind of handles how you send out monthly bills and then have something accumulated in there. And it kind of helps to deal with some of the collection costs with following up, mailing, and any other types of activities.
I heard you say, you know, giving a discount 2% pay within 10 days is a little bit cumbersome, but what about people who are interested in paying quarterly, or semi-annually, or annually? Are you interested in giving them some kind of an upfront discount so you'd have the cash flow?
From a finance perspective, that's a real good idea, but it's not built into our rate structure. So it, we've basically got a rate structure set up where we do monthly billing. So the rates that Will Dan had done in their reports were kind of based on that. If we go to where, where maybe they're paying a quarter, three months in advance, that would be financially better for us, but it would change the numbers just a little bit.
Well, and then if they didn't use that much water, or, then you'd have to give them a refund, and.
Right, there's a lot of accounting to reconcile those. Like, I lived in an area that has snow, and it had, you know, 20 feet of, 10 feet of snow, so you couldn't get down to the meter. So you basically estimated through the winter, and then when the snow melted, you could come up with a bill. It was a big pain in the butt, but until they came up with radio read systems, it could transmit through the, through the snow, it was kind of the best you could do. But that was a huge, you know, springtime issue when it came up, was reconciling everybody's bill and giving refunds that were overpaid and.
Well, I would imagine, since you, you know, are saying people can't afford to pay their bills, that most of those people aren't going to be able to afford to pay a year in advance.
Most of them, but there are some that I'm aware of that do pay in advance.
Yeah, I've had, I've had a few customers that may be gone for a month or two, so they'll put $300 or $400 down on it, and then, you know, they'll have a credit, and then as that bill gets used, that credit will go down until it's zero, and then they get a bill sent back to them again.
I have a question. So, but how practical is it for like a big user like Pelican Bay? Because I know their state is struggling right now, but is it very realistic to say we're going to charge them the late fee?
Well, they, they're kind of a special, unique system. I'm not intimately involved with them, but I know they do take daily readings of the usage that's out there. And so they, I would think from that daily usage information, they could calculate those out. Now, we may need to get to some method where we transmit to them what the billing information is before we mail it off. And that's kind of where I'd like to maybe have a soft approach to enforcing something like this, if we do it this drastic, and I'm definitely admitting, it's a drastic approach, but it's kind of forcing us to get way ahead of the curve in current times to get payments made on time, and to.
What do other cities do?
Well, when I was in Biggs, we did a 10%. I have seen, I worked for a water provider in San Diego County, and I think they had a minimum with a percentage, I think like 2.5 to 5%, and then like a minimum of $10. So, you know, if you had a bill that was only $25 and you didn't pay, you would get that minimum amount charged rather than a, you know, miniscule percentage that wouldn't even cover the postage stamp.
If we did a soft approach with one entity, we would need to do it all.
It would be citywide. I wouldn't, I mean, I feel a little uncomfortable making a public announcement that we're not going to enforce it for two months.
Yeah.
But that's really, in effect, what it would be doing, to get somebody up to speed. I mean, the cost might be a little high, but we might want to put some type of mail.
I think, I seriously think, because we are a government agency, and we do a lot of business with other government agencies and other big companies that don't pay within 30 days, that it's going to become more of a nightmare.
Yeah, and it, we might want to put like a 1% fee with a $5.
And, you know, I'm, I'm fine with maybe a 1% after 45 to 60 days, but most people are struggling to get their bills paid within the 30 days. And bigger companies, they have that 30 to 60 pay cycle. At the company I work for, you know, we expect small businesses to pay within 90 days. And if they don't, then, then there's, you know, then you deal with that. But we know that the agencies that we deal with never pay before 60, and usually pay at 90.
This, this also, from, from maybe a general perspective, it's not, but from the utilities' perspective, we definitely don't want to wait that long. We generate a penalty and a charge, and that's to cover sending them out a late notice, which also becomes a disconnect notice. If it's not paid by this date, then the service will be disconnected. So it's a way of transferring the cost of producing the information to the customer that, look, your bill is unpaid, if it's not paid by this date, we're going to have to disconnect it. So that's something there. If we change that fee, I wouldn't want to regress any less than what we're doing now is a $4 late fee. But I still think it should be a percentage, because I think somebody that has a $100 bill, as opposed to somebody that has a $1,000 bill, they're not the same customer, and they really shouldn't, they're basically getting free use of money. If you're a business, and, you know, you get a specific power bill that's out there, if you don't pay it, Pacific Power will turn you off. So it's kind of bringing it up to speed in the same sense of those. And there are certain utilities that that's just the way it goes. And even the largest provider, us included, State of California, when they get a power bill come in, they have to pay those sooner, and they don't have, the CPUC dictates when those dates are, and they don't deviate from that. They'll stick to those. A lot of times, carry your balance, but they're making really a financial decision a lot more sophisticated than we can in order to do that type of stuff. But we do carry people's balances, so you could get these late charges and continue to accrue them while you're still having unpaid bill. We try not to let people get too far behind, but I usually let the office staff allow them one time, and then when it gets into the two-month range, then they come back to me. And we usually try and be pretty understanding with people, and if they're polite and patient with us, that's one of the advantages of being a small town. We can be more personal than, say, Pacific Power can. But we don't want to leave our assets unprotected at the expense of everybody else. So my approach has always been, take everybody as a whole, and how can I make this fair so that everybody gets fairness? I'm trying to hit 100%. It's, you know, that's a theoretical value, but.
I agree that percentage makes more sense, but I, I'm not, personally, I'm not going to support 10% if they don't pay their bill in 30 days.
I'd like a flat fee, like, was suggested, the flat fee, if it's under so much, like to cover shipping and handling essentially, envelope and the staff time to send out a bill, whether that's $4 or $5, and then a 1% or something. It, or if it's over that, then the 1% plus the minimum.
What's 1% of $10,000?
A hundred bucks.
Okay.
Yeah, so like, if you had a $4 flat fee, it would really be no different for anybody else, and if you made it, you know, 1% or a $4 minimum, that's basically going to cover somebody up to $400. You know, so that would cover a large percentage of, or, I'd say 100% of the single-family residential. It'll, it won't cover probably the commercial and the industrial-type users.
So if you send out a sewer bill, water and sewer bill, and they're late, and then, then they're late again, and you send the pink slip, then there's.
They only get a $4 charge once.
There's a $4 charge on that.
One time. That's even though we've sent them two notices, and, you know, we don't go in the process of going out and putting door notices on people's places. And I've been to a lot of places that when you get to that, it'd be like, you'd have a late payment in 30 days, and then 45 days, you would send out a door notice. I've been to a lot of places that charge $25 to $50 to deliver that door notice, because it takes one staff person to go out there and set it up, and it becomes a big cost. But a lot of times, that's more important, where you have to continue to make sure you get that stuff in. And I'm trying to deal with it now, so I can come back and report to you that, you know, our utility accounts, we have, you know, 1% that's greater than 90, to, you know, give you some percentage of where they are in their, they call it an accounts receivable aging schedule. And I've been gave, been able to get those things balanced, but it's not quite fair yet, and I'm still, you know, working through some of the kinks, but this is one of the kind of weaknesses that we have out there.
So right now, are you saying that Pelican Bay pays a $4 late charge?
If they're, and their bill, I said $10,000, their bill's probably more like double, triple that. That's all they get is a $4 late charge.
Okay.
We have a convalescent home that's in town that the state, I believe, pays for that. When the state, a year ago, had their big problem, the director there called me up and said, "You're not going to shut me off if we don't pay the bills." I told him, "No, we'd be able to carry this amount, because it's, you know, it's contracted, we will get the money." We're aware of the political situation, but that was kind of one of those things where we had to just kind of sit around and wait. And there was no financial incentive or disincentive. It's the same thing for the sewer bills. We put the delinquent sewers, and those are sewer-only accounts. They don't have a water, so we don't have the ability to go out and shut off anything. They have no late charges that could put on there. So now I understand, after looking into this, why we have so many people on the delinquent sewer list, because why pay $50 a month when you can wait and pay $600 a year end? No interest. That's six months, $600 loan for free. You know, so there's, there's a time value of money there that's, that we're not really recognizing, and I think people are gaming us and taking advantage of it.
And I know this, the nursing home is having a terrible problem every year, because the state doesn't balance their budget. They go with months of not being reimbursed. So I wouldn't want to see their water cut off.
Yeah, and we really haven't.
Cut the water off.
Yeah, Pelican Bay too. I mean, we've had, we've had some issues where we had one bill that went unpaid for a month and a half, almost two months, because one day, the, the readings on there recorded 50 million units being used. We don't produce that much water in a year, so it was obviously wrong. And it's all electronic control devices, and you have to get down to the bottom of that and figure out how to, how to deal with it.
Are there any other questions from the council for Ken?
I, my, my other caveat is this, is that we need to, I agree that we ought to have a flat fee for a minimum, and then a percentage, but then just note too that, if there are issues with skilled nursing facilities, hospitals, prisons, schools, that if something happens, that we're not going to cut off service, that we should.
That's pretty, that's pretty much before and after. That's not going to change. And we can even do it based on, I mean, we can even probably come up with a policy for it, but we could even do it something where, you know, we would credit these things back if, if they paid it within, you know, a few days after it, if there was just a timing issue. Because basically, when all this stuff comes in, it's hindsight, and we can, you know, look back to all the details from when it actually comes together.
But I agree, we need to do something.
I would offer that we're running a business as a city, and what Ken's trying to do is to reduce the gap in monies being lost to the city in what it costs to conduct business and to follow up. And I'll just remind everybody, there's another government agency called the IRS, and they understand penalties and interest charges, and there's not a whole lot of dialogue about it.
Right, I understand that, but I also understand that, um, there are a lot of exceptions to this rule, and I think that if you get too far out there, you're going to have a lot more problems than you are, you know, trying to recoup. I, I agree with you, the person that doesn't pay their, you know, bill after three months needs to have, you know, they need to be dealt with. But a company that we're doing business with, and we've been doing business with for years, and they pay every 45 days, and they have a $100,000 bill, you know, I'm not, I wouldn't, I, I would quit doing business with you if you charged me 10% of my $100,000 bill for paying you within 45 days. And that's what I want to steer clear of. Is that?
Well, and without a doubt, and that's why I wanted to highlight, there's, there's a couple other things in here that are new and different, too. These things are definitely the upper end. I mean, if, if you guys wanted to go 20%, we could still do it. I mean, I would be shocked, but I mean, these are the upper end that, that I would recommend. So I mean, we can do anything, as long as it's a minimum, you know, at least current, what we have is the $4 charge. But I'm thinking, you know, maybe a flat rate up to, maybe a small percentage, or just a flat rate on the first one, and then after that, you know, have a percentage. That would eventually, at the 60-day mark, get us some compensation for some big user that's not paying their bills on time. And 12% per year is not that out of the ordinary or, or outrageous that a business couldn't handle, basically what it would be is a short-term loan for a 12% rate. I mean, anybody can get a short-term loan for, you know, 20%, those payday loan stores and things like that. So that one's a little bit higher, but, you know, 12% is not that high. So I mean, we could even do a lower flat rate at the beginning, 1%, 1.5%, you know, 1.5% would be 18% per year, some kind of happy medium in there, but just addressing it is going to be the biggest move forward for me.
I like a minimum flat rate, and then a, like a 1% or 1.5%.
Right, I, I, you know, I agree that we are a business, but on the other hand, we're the only game in town, so we do have people over a barrel, and they don't have much of an option, so.
Until they can figure out how to desalinate the ocean.
Right.
Cost-effectively, I should add.
But again, we.
They're figuring it out as we speak.
Yeah, down south, my cohorts are dealing with that, but.
Yep.
Cost is real high.
Ken said it also, that we're not trying to, you know, strap people here, or organizations. We know that the state, with the prison, or, you know, we know they're not a private enterprise, and that state monies don't come regularly, or nursing homes, or reimbursements from Medi-Cal, I know that. So we're not trying to.
Right.
Whack people. We're trying to make, make it fair so that people won't gain the system. And we can always, we can always look at these and say, well, the state didn't get paid, so we want to, we want to allow them to not pay the penalty.
We're trying to.
That's always available.
Who makes that decision on a daily basis? Who pays and who doesn't, how much it is, and what we're going to reimburse, and.
You mean from a business perspective, or from what we're collecting?
We need to set a policy, too, I suppose.
I don't think we're ready to do this tonight.
I don't think so either.
Well, what, what we could do, too, is approve, you know, certain parts and leave out the others, just with what we have as the current. I think Rod and I were talking, in a few months, we may have some revised planning fees to come forward. So what I'm hoping is this booklet will be a fluid booklet, that when we produce it to give to the public that wants to see that, it would just, that right-hand column would be gone.
Right, I think, no, this is great progress. I'm just having a hard time penalizing a company 10% of what they owe us if they don't pay us within 30 days.
Right.
I don't, I just don't agree with it.
And I've got two other ones that I don't want to forget to bring up that are not maybe as harsh as this, but the same type of scenario. And the first one's still on that page three. We currently charge $25 for a return check. The law allows up to $35 for second subsequent checks, and that's kind of one of the changes I was looking at, if we got two or more.
It's fine.
And then the other is in the.
Sewer fees, and some wording in the sewer fees.
Yeah, that, and then the big, the big one that we have not done is a turn-on or an activation charge. A lot of places, when you start up service, even if you start and stop service, they will have like a setup charge or an activation charge. I put in there, it's on page 10 of 11.
Turn-on charge.
Yeah, it says turn-on charge, account activation and/or setup charges. That one, I admit, at least, you know, we'll, we'll say that's kind of a little high, but I think probably $10 might be the low end, anywhere between there. That way, when we get a new customer come in, we do have a lot of rentals, renters that move from place to place, and there's a lot of accounting processing before somebody even goes on to turn out, turn on and read the meter and set up their service that gets incurred without really any means of collecting it. It's kind of built into the rates, but.
This might be a question of the water department, but when somebody moves out of a house, do we go turn the water off regularly? Is that what we do?
It depends on how the account's set up, if it's a landlord.
100% of the time, we'll get a final reading. That's, because we'll send somebody when, like, if you move, your bill normally cycles on the 25th, and you go out on the 10th.
I, I rent a house or sell a house, and I move away, and you get a final water meter reading, and it sits vacant for four months, and I happen to have a slow leak in a outside hose bib, and I lose 50 gallons of water in three months. Who pays for that if it's sitting there vacant?
When that is closed, it gets on their electronic meter reader books, and then they go out and check it to make sure. If we have some usage and nobody in there, then we will turn it off. I'm not sure if on a regular basis, when we get a final reading, we actually turn off, off the valve. But there's been a couple times where people have moved in, we start getting some reading, didn't know somebody was there, and had to do some inquiries to find out, oh, somebody moved in, and they didn't know to tell us that they were there, but the usage is still accumulated.
I didn't know I was supposed to pay for water.
Exactly.
Oh, the cable was hooked up and I didn't notify you?
A lot that we're doing now, more than, say, was done maybe four, two, three, well, at least two years before I got here. When somebody comes in and says they're a renter, we want to know that they have permissions and rights to be in that property. We had one case where somebody was gone for, say, six months of the year, and somebody else knew about it, came in and moved into their house and started up service, and the guy came back and told us, well, we now have a flag on there that without his specific authorization, we won't turn it on.
Didn't something like that happen, and they sold all their stuff while they were gone, too? Sold all their furniture?
Sold, stole, I mean, one of the two.
That's amazing.
So we try and get some type of proof that they have with a tenant agreement or something like that, because that will help us, too, is when they're allowed to move in. And a lot of times, somebody will move out, the landlord might want it, to use it for two weeks to do some work. You know, we have to have a method of dealing with that. If we've only got a two-week bill and they only get a little bit of usage by having a turn-on activation charge, at least we're recouping our costs for dealing with it for one month, two months, or however long.
And I think it, some of it has to do with the way the account's set up, too. With, if the landlord comes in and sets it up and says, you know, "This is in my name, don't turn it off," you know, as their residents move in or out, those, those kinds of accounts don't get shut off.
Yeah, because they, basically, it's going to go to one person, we don't have to worry about changing addresses. So if that was the case, then that landlord would be paying the bill, there'd be no changing of anything, and it would be up to him to, you know, collect. That's, I think it's happening less and less, but it really is better in the long run.
Bob, can we charge an activation fee on a utility? Or account setup charge?
I think so. What's the definition of activation? Is this any time there's a changeover, or is it...
Anytime a new account is set up or established, or if they had an account from two years ago and it's reopened. So it's basically when somebody turns it on, they get an account, we're going to send a bill to them.
I think we, I think we can charge the actual cost, and so, you know, Ken would need to...
I can easily show $25 in actual cost, so I don't want to get into an actual cost basis, because it'll probably show higher, but I've got at a minimum, an accounting clerk that deals with it and a meter reader, just at a minimum, so just their time alone will easily reach the 25. And I'm not really looking at trying to recover 100%. I think it might, there is some account activation built into the charges, so if you've been a customer for three or four years, we will get that, but if you're only a customer for three weeks or three months...
It seems like when I first started doing business with the city as a resident, I had to pay a deposit.
Yeah, we still require that, and that's, that's in the utility, I know that's in there, too, where it talks about deposits. Yeah, it's one and a, I think it's one and a half times...
So these activation charges, Ken, would go into the enterprise fund.
Right, right.
Yeah, so in the, in the long run, they would allow us to keep the rates a little bit lower and still have the same amount of revenue to the fund.
Any questions on that activation account setup charge?
No.
Oh, here's the deposits, on the bottom of 10 of 11. It's maybe one, two, three categories up, it says water deposit.
I, I was just wondering, and too bad Megan's not here, if that could, if that would be included with HUD, because I know that that would impact our low-income families, so...
I know they, they make a calculation for what they call the utility allowance, and they allow so much towards utilities. I'm not sure how or if they actually handle payment of a deposit for somebody, but if somebody is a current customer and we can look at their payment information, we would basically, you know, pull somebody up, even say John Doe lived in the town for a year, left six months ago, and then came back, and he was a good-paying customer for that 12 months, we'll use that credit history that he's established with us to basically allow him to connect up without any deposits.
But I would, I would want to know if I'd get...
Why don't we, I think this is a, a great work in progress, and obviously, something that's going to be great for the community to have available. I, I think that there's some questions that still need to be answered, and maybe some more thought put into the percentage versus late fee and how that would affect our businesses that we do business with, so...
Adam, Mayor, I guess I would offer, I would be prepared to move forward on the adjusting the rates for the cultural center renting. I'm concerned that we continue to lose, you know, serious money there in operating...
Can we adopt a portion of this since...
Ken, you could adopt just a portion, yes. Remember, sizable pieces of it are already in place throughout there.
Yeah, so what I would say is what we don't want, let's focus on what we don't want, and then just put X's through that, and then, you know, the resolution approving it would be everything else. Or just focus on like the cultural center.
All we're really talking about here is the delinquent late charges and penalties for water, sewer, and general fees.
And activation.
Yeah, and the second, second activation charge and the second return check.
Right.
Okay, I'm actually, hold on, you can sit down.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Just sitting here looking at this in the audience, I noticed that, like, for cultural center rental, we went from $120 for the first hour to $75 for the first hour. That's quite a cut down. But then the $60 for each additional hour, it says, and then the new schedule is up to $375, so it actually seems like we're charging less. But then I notice I go down, it has cleanup. It used to be actual cost, now it says $180 minimum.
Yeah.
What's the incentive to clean it, then? I mean, if you're going to be charged $180?
I can actually, we actually went from having staff clean it, which took a lot more time, to having a professional cleaning service, and they charge a flat fee of $180 to go in and do a general cleanup after an event. So if, let's say, someone goes in there and they have alcohol, and they spill it everywhere, and, you know, it becomes a bigger issue, that's why it says minimum, because then we're probably going to have to take money out of their, their deposit to cover more of the cleaning costs.
Excuse me, three lines above that, it says setup and/or cleanup. It was $20 per man-hour, minimum of two man-hours, and now it's going to be $40 per man-hour, so kind of double dipping.
Yeah, that's, that's actually, no, that's actually if, let's say, you're the bride or the groom, and you want, sorry, you want the city to go in and set up the whole room for you, and put up all the tables, and you give them a layout, and you say, "I don't want to set up the tables and the chairs, and I don't want to do this and that." They can actually give a layout to the city, and we can actually take our staff in and do a setup for their wedding or their party or whatever they're renting the...
Well, it says exactly the same words, it says cleanup, cleanup, cleanup.
Do you want to explain that, Rod?
Yeah, the cleanup would be taking down equipment, chairs...
No, I understand that, I mean, it says cleanup, and then cleanup.
Yeah, remove the cleanup.
But anyway, I just, I was wondering about that. I know that when friends in the past have rented it, we usually went in there and scrubbed it from top to bottom, you know, we want to get that deposit back, but I mean, if there's going to be $180, you're just going to say, heck with it and let, pay it, or they're not, just not going to go there, they're going to go somewhere else. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. I'm just going to either entertain a motion or a table.
I would, I would move that we adopt, this motion is presented with the summary schedule fees, funds, and penalties, with the exceptions of the general fees, delinquent charges, and late charges and penalties, and general fees, water, sewer, and the turn-on charges.
I'll second.
That was, I'm just going to clarify, that is approving this resolution less the late charges and penalties under general fees, water, and sewer.
And the turn-on, the turn-on charge for water.
And the activation fee.
Activation fee.
Okay.
And the activation for the, is there, I think there's an activation for sewer?
No, no, you cannot turn, necessarily turn off the sewer. Turn off water, you can't turn off sewer.
Okay.
Otherwise, couldn't back up on you.
Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westphal?
I'm going to vote no, because I had more questions on the leases, which we didn't get to cover.
Leases?
Yes, on page four of 11.
That's because they didn't change. Everything else here where it says proposed fee and it's blank, those aren't, they didn't change, that's, that's what they are currently. The only things were, and he just put it in here, so it's a document that the community can have. So these are our current fees, the only thing that we're changing are the things that are in the proposed fee far-right column.
I understand, but I've had constituents ask why the Chamber of Commerce is not paying any fee, so I wanted to be able to ask Ken about that, and I wanted to have more information on Front Street Building and B Street Wharf, because I'm not familiar with those two properties.
Okay, and you're more than welcome to ask those questions, but it has nothing to do with the actual information we're, we are approving this evening. So if you're in favor of the cultural center changes and the other small adjustments, then that's what we're actually voting on. So I'm going to give you a chance to vote again.
As I said, I'm just questioning three things on the leases. I'm in favor of all the other changes or what we're not going to change, what we're going to address later. So for right now, I think I will just change my vote tab stain.
Mayor Protember?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalton?
Yes.
Okay, authorized staff to proceed with a request for proposal process for the beachfront park irrigation projects.
We have Prop 50 money to use recycled water for a couple of things. One is to construct some recycled infrastructure inside the treatment plant, and the other is to construct some irrigation improvements out in beachfront park. The construction in the treatment plant was done by Wall and Construction and is nearing completion, and I need to get some state permits and so on to get that money, but the work in beachfront park, I need to do an RFP and so on, so I'm requesting permission to go out for an RFP for the irrigation work in beachfront park.
I don't know if staff has had an opportunity to talk to you about this, but when I met with, actually, I guess it was our ad hoc committee meeting for cultural center issues, we discussed the possibility of a project that would take your water, is it called Title 22 Water, from the treatment plant and move it over to the pool and the cultural center and use that to heat, for the heating systems. And so we were curious, and I, I think we asked staff to talk to you about, or I think I did during our agenda-setting meeting, as to whether or not that could be incorporated into this beachfront plan for irrigation.
Yeah, I think certainly the infrastructure we have at the plant would accommodate that, and so I want to talk with the Prop 50 people, see if I can incorporate that as far as getting them to pay for it. Even if we don't get them to pay for it, I think we certainly could build the pipes and so on, there'd be no problem doing that, maybe even while we're putting in the pipes for the irrigation, we can do some special things, so...
Great, so...
And the reason is to reduce cost and improve the efficiency.
Charles and I were looking at, as we're looking through the costs of running the cultural center and all of the huge heating bills that it has, and then this, this idea that Jim has of, of using that Title 22 Water, and then Jim, or I'm not Jim, John Cochran is working on getting a proposal, the actual engineering and a proposal, to actually take that money and use it to heat the cultural center and to heat the pool. And, you know, initially, it'll, there'll be a fee to make that happen, but over the long run, it'll significantly reduce our operating costs.
By using heat pumps, instead of using the air to use as a heat sink, they use water, actually, and it's much better.
If you have warm water.
And it's fairly warm.
And it's, and John, the way John explained it is that it's already 60 degrees when it comes out of the treatment plant, and so that's a benefit. And number two, it's completely de...
Has no chemicals at all.
Chemical, yeah, there's no chemicals in it, so the pipes that it actually runs through will last longer than if we were just using regular water.
On your Prop 50 funds, how, what's the percentage you get in that, 100%?
It is 100%.
And we don't know how much, because they don't know the project.
I do know how much. I get $950,000, and I don't think we can spend it all.
But we may spend more of it if we can look at the heat sink and go to the pool and cultural center. Spend as much of that as you can.
Yeah, perhaps, yeah. Yeah, I, it'd be nice, so we'll see what we can do there.
I think if you don't have enough to do.
Oh, that's fine.
If it's a Prop 50, if it's Prop 50 eligible.
Yes, and that certainly wasn't identified in our original project, so I don't know how all that works.
Right.
And there are new Prop 50 projects coming up all the time, and I mean, it's an interesting project for them, so maybe they would be interested in that.
Well, and I, I think, I don't know who all was involved, but, you know, John, I'll say John Cochran tonight, because, you know, he was the, the person that was explaining it to Charles and I, and I appreciate that kind of innovative creativity, you know, that taking, you know, recycled water and using it to heat our buildings, I mean, that's...
That's neat.
That is neat, and I, I, yeah, I think it's great. So anytime our staff comes up with those kinds of ideas and projects, it's, I appreciate it. So is there any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close it and bring it back to this, to this council for direction.
I move that we authorize Mr. Barnes to proceed with this RFP.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Do you have any legislative matters this evening, Mr. Butler?
Mary, I do have a quick one. You'll, the council will recall that the League of Cities Annual Conference has been scheduled for mid-September. You selected the mayor to be your voting representative, primary representative. She has decided that she can make it to the conference, and as, we're going to give her a public kudos, that tonight, a month ahead of time, she has submitted all of her travel paperwork, so Ken gave her a little brownie, a brownie, brownie point today for doing that.
We exchanged a gasket for a brownie.
Oh, I did want to ask one question related to all of that. Each year, the League has a series of resolutions that get discussed and voted on in the big final General Assembly. That's kind of the reason that you appoint someone to be your voting delegate. There are six this year, and the mayor and I recently received the resolutions packet. One option would be for us to put this on the September 7th agenda, talk about each of these six things for 15 to 30 minutes, give direction to the mayor. I'm a little bit negative on that, because I think we're going to have an active agenda on September 7th. We have a three-week break between meetings, and that's usually what happens, stuff piles up, and we have to get it scheduled. Would the council be okay with, I would distribute to each council member the... Would the council be okay with, I would distribute to each council member the resolutions packet. You take a look at this, decide if there's anything that is particularly of interest to you and then comment, provide input directly to the mayor on that issue on your own time, or do you want me to? I can certainly come back, put it on the September 7th agenda, you would have this as part of your agenda materials and we can hash out, you know, the six issues. Some of them are kind of no brainers, like supporting the first lady's, let's get kids moving campaign against obesity, I mean, it's hard to be against that, but there are some that would be a little more detailed and would require a little more discussion. I just, either way is fine with me, but I don't necessarily want to agendize it if you are okay with feeding, giving feedback to the mayor between now and the time she leaves.
Well, I think we ought to treat this just like we do city government. Our constituents, they're laxus and they give us feedback and we vote. So Kelly's our elected person going to this, so we should give her feedback and she needs to go vote? So I would be in favor of getting that information, letting her know and then voting.
That would be fine with me and if they're, if after the council reviews these resolutions and they feel strongly about one needing more discussion, then you can just let Mr. Butler know and we'll put her on the agenda.
I, I think that's the best solution is if we need to itemize one, then we can.
Good, thank you, appreciate it.
You okay with that, Donna? Okay. Anything else for that?
That's all. Obviously, we were tracking the state budget, but nobody has a clue really what's going to, how that's all going to impact us. I don't think we have the same scary exposure as counties do, so we're not white knuckling it as much as Jay Serena is, for example, but, but we're just kind of tracking it and hoping that they can kind of make progress soon on it.
Yeah, and I've been providing, forwarding a lot of information on grant opportunities to cities, to the appropriate city staff and or some to Mr. Renfro on some things that counties are eligible for, I forward to Jay Serena, so that we're all kind of aware of the monies out there for, and we, and we may not qualify, but it's worth, there's been a few things worth looking at at least. Okay, reports, concerns, referrals, council, travel and accident reports. Mr. Burns?
I have most city travel report, more city accident.
I'd just like to say that if I were going to break, what did you do?
I tore my Achilles tendon.
If I were going to tear my Achilles tendon, I too would want to do it dancing on a cobblestone road in Scotland. That's awesome, I think. Welcome home. Okay.
Ah, but it was grand.
Yes, sounded like it. Ms. Westfall?
Actually, I just thought of something. Remember that guy Jim from Curb ID who was questioning the million dollar bond? Did he ever come in and discuss that?
He called me a couple of days later and we're, what we're looking at doing is still requiring him to demonstrate that he's got insurance, but less, for less than a million dollars. And the more we talked about it, we thought about what he's really doing. I did involve Mr. Black as well in this. I, I think it's a good thing for him to be able to demonstrate that he does have some insurance and some coverage, but a million dollars is probably a little steep in light of what he's doing. So I tasked him, Jim, with going back and talking to his insurance agent and seeing what the savings would be for a lesser amount of money and haven't heard back from him since, but he did, he did contact me.
Thanks for the update.
Catherine?
I attended the IGRC meeting with Councilmember Slert and our city manager, and I am pleased to report that we were highly applauded by the harbor master in particular for our collaboration with them. They, they were very complimentary with the city in particular for our assistance with them on a number of issues, so, and working with them in their grant for the, the trail, the.
Yeah, they announced the, the award of their trail and we did help a little bit with that. I think they were also talking about the rehab of the seafood processing building.
Right, the CDBG over the counter grant. And, but they were very complimentary towards us and that was very nice to hear. And then I also attended the solid waste meeting and Councilmember Bernstein, and I wanted to remind folks that we're having a, meet the new docs, function, chamber mixer this Thursday night at the Hampton Inn from five thirty to seven.
Isn't it five to seven?
It's five thirty, but somewhere around in there.
Okay. Mr. Slert?
Madam Mayor, I have a handful of things. I've attended the visitor board, visitor bureau board, and they're still very concerned in the issue of pursuing sustainable funding, is an ongoing issue. As Ms. Murray suggested, we attended the IGRC meeting with Mr. Butler and the mayor and I attended the cultural center ad hoc committee. And then I attended a, well-attended with Councilmember Murray, a health caregivers meeting of local dentists and doctors, a group that are against the removal of fluoride from the water. And it was the largest apparently gathering of the health caregivers in Crescent City history.
Really?
It seemed to be very well organized and they're very opposed to removing the fluoride.
How many people were there?
Maybe close to forty. A very good turnout. And then I attended the airport JPA as a citizen and they're moving forward with getting requests for proposals for civil engineering and soils. And architect and engineer requests for qualifications will be, are being prepared currently by the construction manager, supposedly to go out in the fall. And then I attended the Elk Valley Rancheria Ad Hoc Committee with the mayor. And Elk Valley Rancheria continues to move forward with their development and pre-construction. And then I'd like to address the Westfall ill-fated sewer rollback failure. And in doing that, I'd like to first salute city attorney Bob Black for successful and I believe correctly representing the city's best interest against that initiative for the ballot, which a judge, as you must know, has said will not appear on the ballot. And I think that's actually a good thing. The citizens have elected myself and our, my colleagues to represent them and I think we do a good job of representing the citizens. The feedback that I get from many people is that they're tired of Ms. Westfall's antics and agendas and that their attitude is enough is enough. And so I carry that message from the people that I'm in contact with on a daily basis. I think the, the actions have continually proposed, have continually taken the city backwards and staff forwards. And I guess I'm not going to, I refuse to let the, the cost that's associated with this continue to slide by. My assessment is that it's over a hundred thousand dollars that's been spent by the city to date regarding various claims, and that's coming out of the taxpayers' money and that's for taking us backwards instead of forwards. I think it's doing a great disservice and hardship to this community, to our citizens due to, you know, a particular agenda, and there doesn't seem to be any conscience about the actions and or the misuse of taxpayers' money. And I would also indicate that from the input that I get from people, she is not representing the majority of the citizens. For over two, or about two years, the citizens have indicated repeatedly to me that they don't like the direction.
Excuse me? Excuse me? Mr. Plack? You do, but you don't, you do not have the opportunity to speak out from the crowd. You have an opportunity during public comment and you've had that opportunity all night. You are out of order and if you continue to be out of order, you will be asked to leave. Thank you very much. I'm sorry for that interruption, Mr. Slert.
Certainly. Anyway, the, the citizens indicate to me that they don't like the direction that Ms. Westfall has proposed to take the city over the past nearly two years. And this recent effort regarding the initiative has been another wild goose chase with absolutely no benefit to the citizens. In fact, it's wasted time, money and resources. And so I would ask her again to consider stopping the madness and the waste for our citizens and propose to be constructive and help move the city forward in a positive manner. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, I, let's see, have attended several meetings, been meeting Elk Valley Rancheria Ad Hoc Committee, the Cultural Center Ad Hoc Committee. We had a wonderful Delano County Fair and although numbers were down slightly, those that were involved put on a wonderful fair and our kids benefited from the livestock auction and it was, it was really a great event. And I attended the economic development meeting put on by Elk Valley Rancheria. Mr. Butler and I were both there. It was a great meeting, the USDA staff was here, not just the Eureka staff, but also the state director and was able to really guide a lot of our leaders here on how to possibly take advantage of some of their fee, not fees, but their pots of money. And even if, and one of the things that I appreciated is that even though there might be a certain pot of money that's not available right now, if you get your application in, you, you know, when the money becomes available, you can, you know, kind of be at the top of the list. So it was a really good interactive meeting. And I think that Mr. Butler, and actually Mr. Renfro was there too, had good dialogue and we'll be able to, you know, build on that relationship with the, the state USDA program. Our Delano Solid Waste Management Authority signed the contract with Recology at our meeting last week. And so that is actually signed, Mr. San Giacomo, the president and CEO, CEO of the company, actually came here from San Francisco to sign the contract and then had a, to get together with his employees afterwards. And although it's signed, there's still several conditions to be met before the actual contract can commence in July of 2011. So that's progress. Let's see. I just wanted to remind everybody that, oh, I've been asked to do the mayor's choice for the quilt show on August 21st and 22nd. And kind of started that with the car show a couple of months ago out at the fairgrounds, so I, I think people like the idea. So it was kind of fun, so I get to go pick out my favorite quilt. Also on August 21st is the Smith River Festival, for those of you that want to support that endeavor. August 28th, CASA is having their annual golf tournament. And I attended my very first seven AM, two a day football practice this morning. My son is actually starting high school, so that was a big event for me this morning and when I went to pick him up, there were kids actually getting sick, they were so out of shape, I felt so bad, I can't watch. But just wanted to, you know, just remind people, school's going to be starting up here in a couple of weeks and keep your eyes and ears out for the school buses and the kids around our community. With that being said, I will adjourn this meeting, thank you.